Good morning, everyone. Let me welcome all of you here to the Orange County Board of County Commission meeting of February 11th, 2025. As we begin this morning, I'm going to call on our colleague Commissioner Uribe to introduce her guests, who will be bringing the invocation. Following the invocation, Commissioner Uribe, we would love for you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And then after the Pledge of Allegiance, we're going to call on the Communications Director, Dr. Jeffrey Williamson, to come forward, who will be reading a proclamation recognizing United Way 211 Day here in Orange County. And then we'll have a presentation regarding Art in the Chambers from Ms. Vicki Landon. And with that, Commissioner Uribe, you're recognized at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning. Good morning, everyone, colleagues, and everyone here in the audience. It is an honor today to introduce by the Hoover Cajic Cacheca is a unique person, just like his name. He was born and raised proudly in Colombia, and he has called Orange County home for over six years. A Catholic priest since 2004, he graduated as a psychologist from the Pontifical Salesian University of Rome in 2009. He has solid training and knowledge in psychology, along with extensive experience accompanying communities and families. Recognized as a community leader, he is a specialist in mental health and consistently contributes knowledge to the community with an unmatched style. And when I say unmatched style, there's nothing that could be more pure and true, because Father Hoover, unlike any Catholic priest, is a realist. He's there, he's with the people, with the great ones, and the last one, and he's hilarious, too. And he has style, even though he doesn't have style today. He normally has style. When he's not in church, you can find Father Hoover caring for and protecting animals, reading or engaging in sports. The Reneshead Foundation was born in his heart, and today is a reality for which he tirelessly works every day in their management team, leading new projects and initiatives. Father Hoover spreads joy, energy, and laughter wherever he goes. It is an honor to have him here in District 3 with Father Jose, as they work directly in our community, to serve the ones that we don't get to see, to give a voice that we don't get to hear. And it's my honor to have Father Hoover here today to bless us today as we start our day. Thank you, Father Hoover.
Good morning, Mayor. For the Catholic Church today is a special day because it's the Our Lady, Lourdes, is the special prayer for the sick people in the world. Señor, hoy más que nunca la humanidad necesita encontrar caminos de unidad que lleven a promover la vida y la dignidad de toda persona. Lord, today more than ever is parised to unit for the humanity and efforts for the common good, and find unity paths and promote the life and the dignity for every person. En muchos lugares hay quienes aún sufren, hay necesidades básicas no satisfactorias. Es el odio y la codicia quienes motivan las decisiones. Help us, situs who still suffer in many places throughout Orange County, whose basic needs are not met, and whose lives are impacted by decisions motivated by the hurt and the greed. Today, we pray to you for all the rulers and this world and those in authority over us. Por lo tanto, hoy te rogamos por todos los gobernantes del mundo. Hoy ofrecemos nuestros esfuerzos y trabajo cotidiano, y en especial esta jornada de trabajo. Que la sabiduría que proviene de ti descienda de lo alto y enciendan nuestros corazones el deseo de ser constructores de una mejor sociedad. Today, we pray to you for all the rulers of this world and those in authority over us. Today, we offer you our efforts and daily work, especially these days of war. May your wisdom descend for about ignite the desire to be builders of better society in your hearts. Dios de amor y de bondad, bendice nuestro mayor Jerry Demings. A cada comisionado y a cada servidor oficial del condado de Orange, para que trabajando por el bien común, sean fieles a su vocación y a la misión a ellos encomendada por el pueblo que los eligió. God love our goodness, bless our mayor Jerry Demings and the commissioners and each official servant of Orange County, so that by working for the common good, they may be faithful to their vocation and to the mission entrusted to them by the people who elect them. We ask you this true cries, oh Lord, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Father Hoover. Thank you, Commissioner. As the mayor mentioned, we do have a proclamation today for the Heart of Florida United Way 211 Day. Heart of Florida United Way 211 Day. And the proclamation reads, whereas the Heart of Florida United Way was founded in 1939 and is Central Florida's largest supporter of local health and human service agencies, and whereas the Heart of Florida United Way's mission is to fight for the education, health, and financial stability of every person in Central Florida, and whereas 211 is the federal three-digit dialing number assigned to the United States for Health and Human Services Information and Referrals since the year 2000, and whereas the Heart of Florida United Way 211 offers free confidential 24/7/365 information and referrals to available health, human, and crisis services for Orange County residents, and whereas the Heart of Florida United Way 211 assisted nearly 250,000 people in 2024 to connect with vital local community-based services through 211 calls, texts, emails, chats, and online database searches, and whereas the Heart of Florida United Way 211 is a member of the National 211 Network, which is celebrating National 211 Day and is proven critical service to the continued health and well-being of Orange County residents. Now therefore, Jerry O. Demings, by virtue of the authority vested in him as Orange County Mayor, is hereby proclaimed today, Tuesday, February 11th, 2025, as Heart of Florida United Way 211 Day in Orange County, Florida. Done and ordered this 11th day of February, 2025, signed by the mayor and all six members of the Board of County Commissioners. Receiving the proclamation is the CEO and President of the Heart of Florida United Way, Mr. Jeff Hayward. Mr. Hayward.
Thank you very much, Jeff. I just want to briefly say thank you to the commissioner, the mayor, for the support of 211 that you've provided for many, many years. We're averaging about 600 calls a day into our 211 call center, of everything from, I don't know where to send my child for early care, I don't know where to get food from a food pantry, I'm having trouble paying my utility bill or my rent. And each of those calls is handled by a trained specialist, who I quite frankly don't know how they do that, eight hours a day, in listening to some of the concerns that our constituents have. The sad part is, is much as the county puts in, as much as we put in, as much as how generous this community is, the needs are still outweighing other resources available. But again, I just want to say thank you very much for all the support you give for us to be able to operate 211 24/7 to ensure that the residents of Orange County have that lifeline in addition to county resources. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you take a look around, you will see this wonderful art here in the chambers. This is our newest, and one of four galleries that the county operates here in Orange County. With more on this beautiful art in the chambers is Vicki Landon, the Administrator of Orange County Arts and Cultural Affairs. Ms. Landon.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners. So great to see everybody here this morning. As Dr. Williamson mentioned, Orange County has the great privilege of facilitating art exhibitions in four different gallery spaces. Of course, we have art out in the atrium, the sculpture on the lawn, the newly opened exhibit at our multicultural center, which switches out monthly. And then this piece right here, this is our Art in the Chambers exhibition, and it features the work of our local artist, Robert James, who is here. I'd like to give a little wave so everybody can recognize him. Robert's studio operates under the name Second Born Art, and it's a name that has several different layers of meaning. Robert is a second-born son. As a born-again Christian, he's living a second life. And he's having a second career, having come to full-time art after over 20 years in the insurance industry. This exhibition is titled "The Art of Letting Go," and it has both a spiritual as well as a practical meaning. If you were to visit Robert's studio, you would see a series of gadgets and gizmos set up to spin canvases, to swing paint cans, to allow Robert to really let go of control of the process and allow paint to move on canvas, even particularly in these pieces here in the center underneath our main screen, allowing water to spritz onto paint and the water to eat away at the paint. So "The Art of Letting Go" serves as a reminder for us to, there are times in life where we have to give things over to other powers, be it the power of paint or the power of the universe. And these pieces will be hanging up here through the summer, and we're very grateful to Robert for sharing his work and this beauty with us. Thank you.
All right. Kudos to Robert. Thank you for being here today, and thank you for loaning us the art. Perhaps some of it will be sold while it's being displayed, right? All right. Thank you, Vicki, for that introduction. And now, as we move forward on our agenda, we're going to move to the period of time for public comment. I'd like to invite members of the public present to come forward regarding topics of interest or concern that are within this board's authority. This afternoon, there will be other issues and matters discussed regarding land use issues or concerns that should be properly spoken and addressed at that time. Also, of course, we will solicit public comment during the public hearings scheduled for this afternoon. With that, we're going to move forward. Mr. Thal Mueller, do we have any members of the public present who should be heard at this time?
We do, Mayor. We have six registered speakers this morning.
All right. Each of our speakers will be given two minutes to speak, and so when you come up, if you would be so kind as to provide us with your name and your address, and then the clock will start after that. Who's the first speaker?
All right, folks, I'm going to call your names in one big batch here. When I do, please line up along the back wall in the order called. When you do approach the podium, one at a time, please begin with your name and address for the record. Our first speaker is going to be Peter Murray, followed by Lorenzo Pinkston, followed by Reverend Eddie Torres, followed by Dr. Jim Moyer, Becky Wilson, and finally Doug Nichols.
Looks like Mr. Murray is not present, so we'll move to the next speaker.
Second speaker was Lorenzo Pinkston.
All right.
Good morning. My name is Lorenzo Pinkston. My address is, my home address, right? You asked me for that. 11525 Sandstone Rock Drive, Riverview, Florida, 33569. Okay, I want to say good morning to Mayor Demings and the esteemed members of the Board of Commissioners. Again, my name is Lorenzo Pinkston. I'm the Senior Managing Partner of Pinkston Diversified. We are the land leaseholder, lienholder, and developer entity for the property commonly known as Timberscan on the lake. Pinkston Diversified by way of assignment holds fee simple ownership of the common areas, including asset easements. While Section 2 owns their buildings, this distinction clarifies our legal standing. For full disclosure, our legal team filed an eviction complaint last year against Section 2, Inc., and our motion for summary judgment will be heard tomorrow. I'm here to request your support as external stakeholders in Section 2, meaning as deedholders, this board has the authority to dissolve the association and remove all remaining buildings and improvements. Section 2 no longer meets the legal definition of a residential cooperative, and we contend that the purported board is merely a de facto board without legitimate authority. To provide some context, the three original tenant sections, Sections 1, 2, and 3, have all defaulted on the lease agreement. Section 1 and 3 have vacated, and their buildings have been removed. However, Section 2 remains obstructing our redevelopment efforts. Section 2 is currently over $4 million in arrears on rent, contributing to a total delinquency of approximately $10 million owed by the tenant sections. We previously discussed our redevelopment plans with the county during the Honorable Teresa Jacobs administration. Following meetings with county officials in 2014, she strongly supported our plan. We remain committed to building a mixed-income housing development with 10% of the approximately 1,000 units designated as Section 8 housing. The site is owned for all three, and our engineers and architects have confirmed its capacity. This project will revitalize the area, addressing the 30-year blight and holding heights, and positively impacting surrounding property values.
Mr. Pinkston, just one more time, can you restate the formal name of the entity that you represent?
Pinkston Diversified LLC.
And you own the common areas?
Yes.
Is that what you stated?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Okay. Should I continue, or is that?
Unfortunately, you did run out of time. But anything that you would want us to have, you certainly can leave that with a clerk, and we will receive it, or any other correspondence. This is an issue that is obviously ongoing, and we're, we have it under advisement at this time. We haven't made any formal decisions, but we will be reaching out, back out to you.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. We're going to move to the next speaker.
Good morning. Reverend Eddie Torres, 5448 Neverland, Orlando, Florida. Dear Mayor and Commissioner of Orange County, Florida, thank you for allowing me to be heard. I thank God for the blessings on my words. Bless Jesus, our greatest black icon on this celebrated Black History Month. For a decade, I have written hundreds of letters pleading for a letter of support for the moment of silence and the use of the Bible that teach creationism and teach intelligent design as a 21st century science. The irreducible complexity of a cell cries out creation, evolution, the ability to change over time to a more complex, amino acids, the building blocks of life encoded in our DNA, has become a religion and a worldview, and now a flawed science. No God of creation is atheism, no God of creation is atheism, and no need for God in society is secular humanism. Creationism explains the origin of life as the beginning. God made all things after their own kind. God made seed before the fruit and the flowers, before the earth was watered. God made fish in the sea after their own kind, birds in the sky after their own kind, the cattle on the land after their own kind. Blessings of God begins with acknowledging Him, the God of creation. You are recklessly endangering the communities by producing a student that denies the existence of God because of the public education given them, mandated by the U.S. Supreme Court. We need a letter from the school board acknowledging or endorsing creationism. I understand that those decisions come from the school board, but you can certainly make a recommendation by endorsing it, creationism and intelligent design. Secondly, I came to talk about fluoride in the water. It's been four months since the Attorney, Surgeon General has told you that it's insane for you not to continue to add fluoride to the water, and yet you still have not done anything. Secondly, I've came to talk about the...
Unfortunately, Mr. Torres.
I just sent you a letter of what I was saying, and I mean, after 100 letters of sending to you guys, you know where I'm at on the issue, and I just want you guys to move, especially on the water and with the spraying of the chemtrails. The Senate is having a meeting today, this afternoon, about the same issue, and I think you need to send a letter endorsing that bill to be passed that our children breathe and drink clean water. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Torres. All right. We'll move to the next speaker.
Dr. Jim Moyer. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Dr. Jim Moyer, 1811 Southern Red Oak Court, Acoee, Florida, 34761. Mr. Mayor, I have some handouts here. How would I go about? I'm the newly elected, I've been newly elected to the Orange Soil and Water Conservation District Board of Supervisors. On February 4th, just a few days ago, the State Senate Committee on Agriculture had a meeting. There were two tabs, there were two items on the agenda. The first was the Citrix Industry, and the second was Soil and Water Conservation Districts. I'm giving you a handout of the written information that was provided at the meeting. However, I would encourage everyone to, if you have an opportunity, to actually listen to the testimony on Florida TV. And the soil and water begins at 44 and 1/2, so 44 minutes and 30 seconds, if you want to advance to that. If something takes place, well, let me just summarize it. It was a four-year review of the 49 districts remaining in the state of Florida. And also, there was a testimony from Jefferson County, on behalf of Jefferson County Soil and Water Conservation District, where they made a good point that many of the conservation districts, you can't tell how active they are based solely on their financial information because there's a significant amount of in-kind contributions from local government. Thank you for your time. God bless you all.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Moyer. We'll move to the next speaker, please.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Becky Wilson, 215 North Eola Drive. I am here on behalf of Windover Housing for today. We have an item on this morning's consent agenda, item number 1425203, and it is approval and execution of a third drainage easement modification. Our project is the project that is being built in conjunction with Universal. This is the 1,000 affordable and workforce housing units. We intended to close on our financing in November, but the way you have to close on your financing is you have to have all of your permits in hand. And in order for us to have all of our permits in hand, we have to modify this easement that the county holds. And it is my understanding from an email I got early this morning from your real estate management group, that one of our neighbors has sent a cease and desist letter, Mr. Stan Thomas. And we already have pending sanctions against Mr. Thomas and his attorney for making allegations such as those that are made in this cease and desist letter that are unfounded. In addition, the city has, I mean, the county has already modified this easement previously in its second drainage easement modification that it signed a few months ago. So I would just urge you all to continue to keep this on consent agenda and approve it. I hate that it is having to be handled this way. I had no other option since we all received this information this morning. I have only just, within seconds, given your county attorney our motion for sanctions, which lays out both the county's ability to continue to move forward with this. Your county real estate management has approved it. Universal and my client have already executed that easement. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Wilson. We'll be addressing that when we get to the consent agenda. Next item, next speaker, please.
My name is Doug Nicholas. I live at 3121 Bay Lake Road. This will be my fourth visit here, and I did not make a big preparation in my mirror before coming because I came today, this is my first trip of the year, but I came today to express my thanks. How many times y'all get that, huh? I came to express my thanks because of my trips here so far, I have made progress, if not necessarily with the issue I have tried to represent, at least with an educational aspect of my ignorance to the situation, such as my first visit was because of the thrift store opened in the neighborhood residential district. The nice people at the zoning area, which Jerry, Mr. Demings, by the way, I want to thank you especially in every visit, you've summoned your superpowers from the back, and they've all met with me in the hallway, and I'm going to mention them by name to express my thanks to them. But my first trip was about that, and they educated me to the state law, which the local governments and all are handicapped by as far as governing businesses now in a home, such as a leaf blower repair business. Okay, I don't know if anybody like that would like to have something like that, but I don't. But apparently, I can open one, drive all my neighbors crazy. Nobody seems to care. I don't know why I never heard it on the news and why the state legislature passed it, but it's not y'all's fault. I do want to express my thanks to these people you can see from my notes, Ms. Tanya Wilson and Ms. Moreau, Jennifer Moreau, they came out on my first visit, and they were very helpful, and they actually listened to what I had to say and pointed me in the right direction. And then, under their staff, Mr. Alan McNeil also sat down with me to explain to me how the county attorneys had expressed that they deal with these matters. I've also had a chance to speak with Mr. Kunkel, who I see here today, about another issue I'm going to bring up soon on my next several visits, because we have an unsafe situation in the neighborhood. And Scott Saraband took a minute of his time to tell me hello. And last and not least, the Public Works Director sent an engineer out to look at our situation, and I appreciate him for doing that, and next time I will be prepared with something to complain about. And I'm very sorry about that, but I, writing letters, sometimes, as I heard the other person say, doesn't seem to get anywhere, and I'm hoping, I'm going to try one more time to make a meeting with my commissioner in District 2, and I hope she will accept I'm going to write her senior aide. And I'm hoping that might avoid me from having to come, but I do enjoy coming. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Nicholas. Do we have any other speakers?
That was our last registered speaker this morning, Mayor.
All right. Then we'll close the public hearing comment period of time, and we'll move to the next item on our agenda, which is the consent agenda. And I'm going to go to Deputy County Administrator, Mr. John Weiss, who will be framing the items on the consent agenda. And with that, Mr. Weiss, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Byron had an unexpected family matter come up this morning. Sends his apologies, but had asked me to step in and join you all this morning. So the staff is requesting to poll one of the items, as previously discussed, that is located on today's consent agenda, that's item C14, more specifically 25-203, under the clerk's nomenclature. And with that one item being polled, we, staff presents the ballot... And with that one item being polled, we, staff presents the balance of the consent agenda for board consideration this morning.
Okay, and just for clarity for all those listening, this is the item that Ms. Wilson, Attorney Wilson, referenced in her public comment. We had some developments that happened where we received a legal document that was sent to us after 1:00 a.m. this morning, and because of that, the county attorney, Nora, the county administration, has had the time to really adequately review what was sent. So, with an abundance of caution, we're going to pull that item so that they will be able to review it and give the board appropriate legal advice going forward. Commissioner Wilson.
Yeah, just a question. It sounds like it's pretty consequential to poll this, and that's, you know, so I think, understanding that some of this is probably still the unknown, is there a way to move this forward so that they don't lose that funding deadline for their...
It's gonna, it's gonna come back in two weeks, and I don't think they're gonna lose the funding deadline if it comes up, you know, just two weeks later, so...
Well, anyone that's tried to get to a closing knows that sometimes the day matters, so I just want to make sure that we're not shooting ourselves in the foot here over...
Well, I'm not, I'm not going to advise the board to approve a document that someone has indicated is unlawful in the sense that we don't have the authority to do what we're doing without a thorough review of the documents that have been presented to me, so that's just where we are right now with respect to that.
All right. Understood. Thank you.
Okay. So I do think that it's prudent at this, this time, when constituents provide relevant information, there was no way for us to even get it. Just so happened, you know, I did read my emails this morning, and I saw it one after 1:00 a.m. I got an email from someone that asserted various things, and so we just have not had time, given the late hour in which we received it, to even adequately review it. So, we would need to brief Commissioners, you all should always be briefed before you ask to vote on something, and as a result of that, there's no way for us to have briefed you this morning. So, because of that, I think it's appropriate, given that item C14 would be pulled, is there a motion for approval of the remaining items?
Motion to approve with the stipulations by Deputy County Administrator, John Weiss.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
No.
All right. Motion passes, and it is six to one. Yes. And with that, we'll just review a few of the highlights from the item, from the action that was just taken. Orange County has been allocated conditionally $807,430 from the Department of Energy's Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant, that's a federal grant. This funding is intended to improve building energy efficiency for us here throughout the county's facilities. Also, there was another item in which there was funding awarded to be used to conduct energy audits on community serving public facilities such as our magic gyms, neighborhood and senior citizens, and county cooperative extension buildings, as well as buildings at Great Oaks Village. Through the Children's Services Funding, our Citizens Commission for the Children Division will be adding over $1.3 million to existing partnerships with some of our region's most ardent nonprofit providers. With the funding, Harbor House of Central Florida will offer support services for youth residing in emergency domestic violence shelters and/or transitional housing. Additionally, Career Source of Central Florida and the Foundation for Orange County Public Schools will expand their individual immersive employment experiences and initiatives, further exposing youth to careers that align with their interests. And so I think that's good news with those various community partnerships that I talked about. With that, we're going to move forward to our discussion agenda. We're going to call on Ms. Carrie Mathews, our Procurement Division Manager, who will be presenting the procurement committee recommendations. With that, Ms. Mathews, you are recognized.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. The Procurement Committee has evaluated proposals for general engineering consultant services. I am requesting board selection of one firm and an alternate, as well as the requested actions on the screen. Commissioner Gomez-Cordero was assigned to the Procurement Committee.
All right. With that, Commissioner Gomez-Cordero, do you have a potential motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I move for the selection of HNTB Corporation with 449.50 points, with AECOM Technical Services, Inc. with 355.83 points as the ranked alternate, as well as the requested action on the screen.
Second, Scott.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion passes, and it is unanimous. All right. Thank you, Ms. Mathews. We'll move to the next item now on our agenda, and this is item A2. Ms. Mathews will be framing this item as well.
Thank you, Mayor. The Procurement Committee has evaluated proposals for employee assistance program. I am requesting board selection of one firm and two ranked alternates, as well as the requested action on the screen. Commissioner Gomez-Cordero was assigned to the Procurement Committee.
All right. Commissioner Gomez-Cordero, do you have a potential motion?
Yes, I move for the selection of Compsac Employee Assistance Program, Inc. with 353.75 points, with MCH International LLC, 328.75 points, and Signa DBA Evernard Care Solutions, Inc. with 315 points as the ranked alternates, as well as the requested action on the screen.
Second, Scott.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion passes, and it is unanimous.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Mathews. Now we're going to move to our work session agenda for today, and the first item under A1 on the work session agenda will be presented by Ms. Susan Usack, the Deputy Director of Public Works, who will be making a presentation regarding Reams Road and Ficket Road. No action is necessarily being requested today. This is for edification of the board. Commissioner Wilson, you may recall, I think we were going to discuss this item previously, but you may have been out, but in either case, we're bringing it forward today. All right. With that, you are recognized, Ms. Usack.
All right. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Susan Usack, Deputy Director at Public Works, County Engineer. I am here to present the Reams Road-Fickett Road Work Session. With regards to the presentation, we'll cover the recap of the October 29, 2024 Commissioners' Report. We're going to have a brief overview of the historical flooding in the area. I'm also going to provide you an update on the infrastructure improvement projects we have and its schedule. In addition, we'll provide potential interim strategies to address the current needs of the community. This will follow up with a summary and board direction. During the recap of the October 29, 2024 Commissioners' Report, the report raised concerns over the flooding at the Summer Lake Boulevard-Fickett and Fickett Road intersection along portions of Reams Road. The report had concerns that the wetlands surrounding Lake Hancock, Fickett Road, and Reams Road areas that were staging higher due to development encroachments. There were also safety concerns due to flooding, which raised concerns that residences were being isolated. There was mention that the center median tubes was removed to allow cars to ride the center line, which was not safe for vehicles to pass in the opposite directions. There was also mention that road striping was underwater and made it difficult for the users of the road to see. And finally, there were safety concerns along the busy road, which is attributed to increasing development and construction. There was also a quick mention that there was street racing along this corridor. At the end, the board had direction, and it was to request a work session to address the consideration of a temporary suspension of the Comprehensive Plan Text and Map Amendments, rezoning, and special exceptions in the affected area, with emphasis for staff to contribute some options for construction activity moratorium, except for construction of required affiliated The area of letting concern that was mentioned in the Commissioners' Report is located within the Horizons West Lakeside Village boundary, as outlined in the aerial to your right. As you can see, we were able to pull aerials that dated back to 1947 that shows Reams Road's existence. Our inspectors who have been with the county for over 25 years indicated that the intersection of Reams Road, Fickett, and Summer Lake was prone to flooding prior to the development and approval of any development in the area. This intersection is identified in the yellow dot on your screen. In 2000, the Lakeside Village started its development. This was around the same time that the county's 311 system came into play, logging flooding reports. When we pulled the 311 reports, we grabbed data between 2000 and 2006, when minor development started to come, when minor development started to come into the area, just to see if there was a pattern associated with development. Our reports showed that the same intersection experienced flooding. When we pulled the data from 2007 to 2019, this was when major development started to occur. Our report showed that in 2017, when Irma hit, the same intersection, along with two other locations, experienced flooding. At the time, the soil conditions were overly saturated, and it was hard for water to recover. As we fast forward to now, there wasn't that much more development that occurred, yet we experienced multiple locations of flooding. This could also have been attributed to the back-to-back storms without time for the soils to recover. One example occurred in September 22 during Hurricane Ian. During this hurricane, it brought 9.4 inches of rain into West Orange County. This is less than the 100-year storm in this area. At the time, there were major roadway flooding along this corridor. It caused Reams Road to be flooded for 16 days between Center Drive and New Market Drive. This, however, was the only time during the past 20 years that the roadway was closed. And here are a few photos of the area that experienced flooding. With regards to the roadway flooding, we had to repair the road, and the cost was estimated to be $180,000. In addition, we also had Hurricane Milton that occurred on October 2024. This brought 10.9 inches of rain into West Orange County. This is comparable to the 100-year storm event, and the Fickett Road right turn lane was impacted. However, Reams Road remained open due to our coordination with FEMA, where we were able to install the Tiger Dams. And also, fortunately, there was no roadway repairs that were needed at that time. So what are the effects in the area? As a result of the road closure, commuters had to detour around the affected area, the longest detour spanning approximately nine miles, and the closure affected an estimate of 300, an estimate of 30,000 per day. So the highlighted segments that we, that I showed before you are two projects that we have currently underway. The first one is the Fickett Road Improvement Project, which is between south of Inglewood Drive to south of Summer Lake Park Boulevard. And the second project is Reams Road Improvements, which is between Summer Lake Park Boulevard to Tapperfield Road. These projects are widened to enhance the corridor's level of service, traffic operations, safety, and flood management. Regarding the Fickett Road project, it entails widening the existing two-lane roads to four lanes. It also consists of installing a 10-foot multi-use trail and a five-foot sidewalk. The road will be constructed above the 100-year storm event, with adding two additional ponds that are designed to accommodate the 100-year storm event. We are also including the intersection of Fickett Road, Summer Lake Park, and Reams Road, and will be installing the roundabout at this location. The estimated construction cost is around $28.6 million, and it is fully funded. The second project is Reams Road Project, and it entails widening the existing two-lanes to four-lane road. It consists of constructing a 14-foot multi-use trail and a five-foot sidewalk. The road will be constructed above the 100-year flood elevation as well, and it will be adding seven additional ponds designed to accommodate the 100-year storm event. We are also proposing a bridge designed south of Green Bay Boulevard, which was recently initiated by staff. The cost to construct is approximately $80.2 million, and it will be fully funded through our CRP program. Regarding its schedule, the Fickett Road schedule is projected to have the design complete at the end of the first quarter of 2025, and the right-of-way acquisition completion at the end of the third quarter of 2025. We were able to expedite the project by working with procurement, and we were able to start the procurement process at the beginning of the second quarter of 2025, with the construction to be completed at the end of the third quarter of 2028. Regarding the Reams Road schedule, the design is projected to be completed at the end of 2025, with right-of-way acquisition to be estimated to be completed at the end of 2026. Again, we were able to coordinate with procurement, and we will be starting the procurement process at the beginning of 2026, with the estimated completion date of this project to be mid-2029. So why did the Fickett Road design schedule get pushed back by one and a half years? Public Works had to coordinate with Orange County Utilities to minimize wetlands and flood, floodplain impacts related to the infrastructure. We had to adjust the plans for utility relocations to the median. In addition, we had to redesign landscape plans to select the appropriate tree species so both the tree and utilities can coexist. We also had to update the plans to reflect driveway connections in the new fire station. Unfortunately, we had to restart the 404 permit with Army Corps of Engineering because the judge ruled to revoke the state 404 permit delegation from DEP and give it back to the Army Corps. This permit has since been submitted and is pending approval. However, the construction schedule will depend on the permit approval of this permit. So why did Reams Road design and construction schedule get pushed back by 2.75 years? We had to add walls to avoid impacts to the conservation easement in lieu of fill slope. This consisted of redesigning approximately half a mile of roadway to avoid relocating the utility lines. We added a new traffic signal at New Market Drive, and we also evaluated options for muck encounter, which includes surcharge, excavation, or bridge design. In the end, bridge design won out. The redesigned roadway plans to incorporate bridge design, we, so as such, we had to redesign the roadway plans to incorporate the bridge design in lieu of an upgrade design. We also had to coordinate with Duke to relocate their transmission line, which took a little bit of time. And the same as Fickett Road, we had to restart the 404 permit. Again, this permit has been submitted and is pending approval, and its construction schedule depend on the permit approval. As staff moves forward to have the projects completed by 2029, potential interim strategies have been evaluated. To ensure their effectiveness, we must understand the history of this area. So why do these roadways flood? These roadways were constructed prior to our modern stormwater design standards. The road was originally a dirt road with shallow ditch systems that was in existence since the 1940s. It was constructed to convey stormwater to the receiving wetlands and lakes, and when the system is overwhelmed, the roadway would serve as a large conveyance system. The existing roadway was also at the elevation within the 100-year floodplain. In this area, water naturally flows from a north-to-south direction, and there are three cross drains identified up there, 1, 2, and 3, that are key locations where the water from the north goes under Reams Road and discharges to the south. In addition to that, number four doesn't have any piping in the way, so as water crosses north to south, it overtops the road. Again, why do these roadways flood? This area is part of a larger Reedy Creek drainage basin. Stormwater runoff coming from the north of Reams Road flows into the basin and passes through the Central Florida's over, Central Florida's Tourism Oversight District, known as CF Todd's Control Structure, located within the property. Now that we have a better understanding of the drainage pattern of the area and the existing infrastructure we have in place, we can investigate various interim strategies to see what we can do during the four-year gap. The first strategy will address pre-storm preparations and enhanced maintenance activities, while Strategy 2 will address potentially adding additional asphalt overlay to a portion of Reams Road. Strategy 3 would be asking the board for direction to the county engineer to implement more stringent development standards, and Strategy 4 will talk about the development Regarding Strategy 1, Public Works will establish policies and procedures to deploy flood protection measures ahead of... flood protection measures ahead of a major storm. This includes the existing cross drains located at one, two, and three, and they have since been added to the priority list for more frequent inspections and pre-storm clearing. We also are seeking flood management, to procure flood management devices such as Tiger Dam, which we use for Milton. Strategy One implementation is quick to implement and is ongoing ahead of major storm events. There are no significant costs associated with it, since we will be utilizing county staff. The cost will come from renting or procuring Tiger Dam, and the cost is approximately two-hundred-thousand dollars to purchase. We will also be investigating grant funding opportunities to reduce the cost on the county's pocket. The benefit of doing this is we will be ensuring cross drains are flowing at maximum capacity to reduce staging and quicken recovery. Regarding Strategy Two, we will be evaluating the opportunity to construct a temporary asphalt overlay to raise the road. We ran the stormwater model, and the output concluded that we need ten inches to raise the road above the one-hundred-year storm elevation. This was expensive and not quick to implement, and the cost was approximately fourteen million dollars. This required additional easements to tie down the existing elevation and permits for stormwater and wetland impacts. And this is essentially a throwaway project, and therefore, we concluded that it was not feasible. We also investigated, what is the maximum thickness allowable without adding additional designs or easements and permit requirements? Our team concluded that a three-inch asphalt overlay will have the benefit of raising a portion of the road above the fifty-year, seventy-two-hour storm event, which is approximately ten-point-nine inches of rain. This implementation is fairly quick to do, as we aim to have it completed prior to this hurricane season. The cost will be approximately one-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars, which our roads and drainage team is currently looking at. This will reduce the likelihood of flooding during the medium-tensity storm at the key locations identified in red. This will lead to our Strategy Three, where we're seeking direction from the board to allow the county engineer to implement more stringent development standards. As you can see, there has been significant development activities that occurred in the past twenty years. All of this development was approved and consistent with the Orange County Land Development Regulation as it relates to stormwater management, floodplain management, and wetland management. Regarding stormwater management, under Chapter Thirty-Fourth of the subdivision regs, the developer is required to abide by the rate of discharge stating the post-development discharge has to be less than or equal to the pre-development discharge. In addition, they have to design their site for a hundred-year storm, I mean, the ten-year, twenty-four-hour storm event for secondary stormwater systems, a twenty-five-year, twenty-four-hour storm event for primary stormwater system, and a hundred-year, twenty-four-hours hour storm for landlocked basins, floodplain impacts, or high-recharge type-A soils. I do want to draw attention to Section thirty-four dash two-four-seven B of this code, which states, "The design frequency for major drainage systems may increase if deemed necessary by the county engineer to protect upstream or downstream properties or to comply with other regulations." This statement was going to play a key role in my Strategy Three that I will be presenting in the next couple of slides. I would also want to mention that approval of the county permits does not mean that they have approval of other regulatory agencies. In addition to stormwater review, additional stormwater review are conducted through the South Florida Water Management District and CF Todd. The South Florida Water Management District reviews the proposed development per the Florida Administrative Code sixty-two-three-thirty as it relates to discharge criteria or criteria established by the local agency or special drainage district. In this particular location, the special drainage district is CF Todd. Staff was able to pull CF Todd's Resolution Number three-seventy-eight that was adopted back in nineteen ninety-nine. In this resolution, CF Todd states that they will accept surface water discharge from Orange County not to exceed a discharge rate of thirteen CSM for a fifty-year, seventy-two-hour storm. This criteria is stricter than Orange County's code, which bases the discharge rate on various design storms that I had mentioned earlier, which can yield a greater discharge than thirteen CSM that's required by CF Todd. So what does thirteen CSM mean? It's thirteen cubic feet per second per square mile. This is, this is equivalent to the discharge of two standard rain barrels per second for every square mile, and it is very, very low flow. So this leads to our Strategy Three. Strategy Three is to have the board direct the county engineer to require an increase in the design frequency for major drainage systems to protect upstream and downstream properties. This will be capping the stormwater discharge rate into CF Todd's system to thirteen CSM for new projects within the Reedy Creek Sub Basin, as identified in the boundary yellow. This will also be consistent with Section thirty-four dash two-four-seven B of the code that I had mentioned earlier, which grants the county engineer the authority to implement more stringent development standards. The board direction further reinforces this authority, adding weight to its implementation. So what are the costs associated with Strategies One through Three? Strategies One and Two will cost approximately three-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars to implement, while Strategy Three regarding new development, they will see an increase in the cost, since it would require larger stormwater ponds to manage and store more water on site. The costs, however, will be site-specific to the project. So what are the benefits associated with Strategies One through Three? Strategies One and Two will allow nearly thirty thousand daily drivers through the corridor by minimizing the risk of flooding, keeping these roads open, improving safety to the public. Strategy Three will provide a path forward for new developments while minimizing the potential adverse impacts to, to these surrounding areas. Both Strategies One through Three will address the health, safety, and welfare of the public. The olives, the Strategies One through Three, is fairly quick to implement as well. While we strongly believe Strategies One through Three are viable interim solutions that addresses concerns regarding flooding in this area, we were asked to present a development moratorium option and outline its implication. This brings us to our fourth strategy. What is a moratorium on development? It's an ordinance to temporarily pause specific land development approval permits in a designated area to provide time to address specific issues impacting the area. And what does the moratorium attempt to accomplish? It's to minimize further flooding and environmental impacts associated with new development. Strategy One through Three would essentially accomplish this. So how would a moratorium interact with the current regulations and ongoing studies? Our updated codes and ongoing studies were designed to address flooding and environmental concerns. These include the Wetland Code, the Floodplain Code, and Stormwater Studies. Regarding the Wetland Code, the wetland impacts associated with existing development were permitted under the old Wetland Code that was established in nineteen eighty-seven. This code has since been updated this past year and went into effect June of last year. The new criteria pertaining to water storage requires applicants to mitigate the storage loss from wetlands and surface water impacts during design. It also sets a one-hundred-foot upland buffer requirement, which provides more storage than the old twenty-five-foot buffer. Regarding the floodplain management regulations, Chapter Nineteen of the Floodplain Code was updated on September twenty-twenty-one. This chapter requires that any fill added within the floodplain would need to provide compensating storage in a cut-for-cut basis. In addition, FEMA reviews the development projects for potential impacts to the floodplain pursuant to forty-four CFR. And finally, to safeguard the community from flooding, we also have the stormwater updates currently in process. One of the studies is the Reedy Creek Drainage Basin Study. This basin study will provide a stormwater model to establish a baseline which will assist in the design of stormwater infrastructure for future developments. The final model submission is projected to be submitted late two thousand twenty-five. We also have the rainfall intensity study. This is to evaluate the available rainfall data to identify spatial and frequency trends. Its determination, if determined, those trends should be considered. The study will determine if those trends would be considered in Orange County's design storm analysis. It is scheduled to be completed mid-two thousand twenty-five. And finally, we have the countywide vulnerability study, and this will identify the risk of critical assets for multiple flood scenarios. This will be scheduled to be completed by fall of two thousand twenty-five. The Drainage Manual will incorporate these studies and assess the feasibility of implementing stricter criteria for areas identified as high-risk due to flooding. It would also incorporate the new stormwater rule update, which will potentially increase stormwater system design requirements. This manual will require policy discussion, code update, and public hearing. It is anticipated to be completed late two thousand twenty-six. And we would like to reiterate that Strategy, all three strategies proposed earlier combined, combined with our updated codes and studies, are expected to address the public's concern about flooding within this area. However, should the board want to evaluate the option of a moratorium on development within this area, we were able to provide two options. The first option is less severe of the two, and it states, "No wetlands and floodplain impacts in the Reedy Creek Sub Basin until the construction of Reams Road is completed in the middle of two thousand twenty-nine, or until more stringent stormwater code modifications get adopted," which was estimated late two thousand twenty-six, whichever occurs first. The second option, which is more severe, states, "No development approvals or permits in the Reedy Creek Sub Basin until the construction of Reams Road is completed, or until more stringent stormwater code modification gets adopted," whichever occurs first. And now I will hand it over to Andrew to talk about what's required for a moratorium ordinance.
So what is required for a moratorium ordinance? It would be a prohibition of a specifically defined use, the more specific, the better. You need a public purpose or reason, and there has to be a rational nexus between the moratorium and the reason. A defined duration, typically moratoriums last less than two years, although the courts have left open longer, or preferably shorter. You need enforcement provisions, there has to be legal authority, and then we have public hearings to adopt the moratorium. The benefits of a moratorium, if we have a public safety issue, then a moratorium may help to solve that. It can improve your infrastructure planning, gives time, as was outlined before, of what we can do with that time. And it reduces the risk of future lawsuits from developers or homeowners affected by flood mitigation, by insufficient flood mitigation or infrastructure. There's a lot of risks associated with moratoriums, they invite legal challenges. Property owners often argue that it's a taking of their property pursuant to the Fifth Amendment. Property owners also could argue that it places an inordinate burden on the, on the use or economic viability of their property, that's a Bert J. Harris Act. In addition, economic impacts, it could have a negative effect on the county, slowing development, negative effect on the development community as well. We've adopted a, this would be a third suspension on development in nine months, so it could have a community reputation issue. There's also a number of unintended consequences and considerations, the costs tend to rise over time with construction, the money and resources to defend legal challenges, what happens if the construction process, projects are already underway, is the duration of the moratorium reasonable, reasonable, it may, it may take two years to complete the drainage manual, but how long would it take to, to solve the issue? And then there may be factors beyond the county's jurisdiction to regulate with a moratorium to, that contribute to the problem of flooding, failing infrastructure weather patterns, and there's the possibility that suspending development approvals and permits will not abate the current flooding issues, and it's limited applicability. So that's the analysis of a moratorium.
So as you can see on the screen, there are many undeveloped parcels that are already protected via conservation easement. There's approximately one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-three acres protected via conservation easement, and per Section seven-one-three-B of the Orange County Charter that was adopted last year by the voters, it says that it requires action by the board to change the deposition of any county-protected lands, and it must be approved by the supermajority vote. In addition, it also said, "Non-county-owned lands seeking development rights for a conservation area must obtain board approval." And this essentially means that should the developer want to seek development rights in the conservation easement, they would need to go to the board for review and approval. This process is currently effective outside the moratorium. Should the board favor the moratorium, we would recommend its application to be within the Reedy Creek Sub Basin, identified in yellow. If you look up there, there's currently nineteen remaining parcels potentially available for development in the sub-basin. Of the nineteen, eighteen are undeveloped parcels, equating to approximately four-hundred-and-seventy-four acres. We want to make note that these parcels would require, would be required to go to the board for approval for land use entitlements. At the time, the board will have an opportunity to provide, the board would have an opportunity to provide their feedback on those developed parcels. This process is also currently effective outside the moratorium. The remaining parcel that's identified in red is currently in the process, and the moratorium, and a moratorium would not apply to this parcel. So in summary, the board requested a work session due to recent flooding events along Reams Road and Faket Road. Reams Road had a history of flooding, and there are major roadway projects within Public Works that should address the flooding concerns and public safety, and is projected to be completed by mid-two thousand twenty-nine. We also provided several interim infrastructure and land development strategies as possible relief to the community. And in addition, any moratorium should be temporary and may have risk and may have So the four strategies presented, Strategies One and Two are being implemented or in the process of being implemented. Strategy One is associated with pre-storm preparation enhanced maintenance activities and is already being implemented by staff, while Strategy Two is associated with adding additional asphalt overlay to a portion of Reams Road. These strategies are low-cost and would improve the flow and recovery, and would reduce the risk of roadway flooding, and should be completed by two thousand twenty-five, fall of two thousand twenty-five. We are requesting board direction for either Strategies Three or Four, with Strategy Three being our recommendation. Strategy Three provides direction to the county engineer to cap the stormwater discharge rate into CF Todd's drainage basin at thirteen CSM. This option would need to be in place until early of the Drainage Manual update in two thousand twenty-six or completion of the road project in two thousand twenty-nine. This strategy will allow the development community a path forward. Strategy Four is placing a development moratorium, either partial or full, with Option One limiting wetlands and floodplain impacts, and Option Two not allowing any development in the area. Should this strategy be chosen by the board, staff would recommend Option One. There are no costs associated with this strategy, however, it may face risk of legal challenges and may be a major impact to, on new development, and it will be years until a solution is implemented. And that concludes my presentation.
All right. We do have questions or comments. There's a lot of information there to unpack. We'll start with Commissioner Moore, then we'll go to Commissioner Gomez-Cordero.
I can't believe I'm first on the subject. That was a tremendous amount of work, and was very thorough, and I really appreciate your attention to the situation. You said one thing that relates to, I have a little flooding problem up in District Two with Border Lake, but you said something about soils having time to recover. Have you been seeing that because of different weather, weather patterns? Is that a situation county-wide, statewide? Could you just expound on that idea a little bit more, please?
So, I'm not a scientist, but we know that the environment is definitely, has definitely changed through time. So when we get these afternoon storms, the back-to-back storms, there's not enough time for these soils to, for the water to absorb through the soil to recover, and when we stack it up, it's going to stage up the water levels and potentially cause flooding. So that's why these new criterias that we're proposing in the Drainage Manual will take that factor into account.
And so that's the recommendation, probably for all of our municipalities, is to look at these stricter standards in light of this problem, because I know with Border Lake, staff's been telling me the lake is already three feet higher than it was the same time last year. Aside from everybody being terrified of the impacts, you know, you wonder long-term what the solutions are. So, so, so you see, those higher standards should be for new development, but do you see down the road the potential to have to go back and look at? the road the potential to have to go back and look at some of our older ponds and improve those standards to be commensurate with those new policies?
Well, the older ponds was already permitted, right, and the district, with us and with the district, so we can't go back to the existing property owner making them redo their site. However, if they plan to do any upgrades, any major updates to their sites, knocking down a building, or have any significant impacts, then they could potentially have to go back to the permit for a recent metal, and they can potentially have to be required to redesign their ponds to meet the current regulations now.
Well, no, I understand that we can't require them to. Well, I mentioned it yesterday, and I know how the rest of the board members feel, but I think I need a good hands-on lesson on pond building, because this is becoming more and more important. And I've tried to read some of the regulations, they're very, obviously, for professional engineers, which I'm not, but it seems like this is an issue we're going to be dealing with in the future. And again, I want to say that the thoroughness of this report was tremendous. I think you've alleviated the need for a moratorium because your solutions were terrific, and to leave this in your hands, I think that was three, I'd be happy to do so. Thank you.
Commissioner Gomez-Cordero.
Thank you, Susan, for the presentation. Very good. I think you already responded to my questions, but I'm going to ask them anyway. I was going to ask you, in the Strategy 1 and 2, you said they are already being implemented?
Right. Our roads and drainage team, I have reached out to our roads and drainage team, and they are doing, they put the, remember the locations 1, 2, and 3 where the cross drains are?
Yes.
The priority list. So typically, their maintenance plan is once a year for the infrastructure, because the county is so vast, they can't do more than that. However, there are items that are on the priority list that, because that they're on the priority list, they will see it inspected more frequently, meaning pre-storm season, pre-storm event, and then right when before it hits, they have to make sure that the inlets, the drainage ditches, the pipings are clean and clear of debris. Our roads and drainage team is also looking at their contractor to raise that three-inch lift for that section of road that are identified in the presentation.
So that means, saying that, that means that now for the hurricane season that's coming, right, in a few months, it would be like, so-so? It would be, it will prevent some kind of flooding there?
The proposal is good enough for a 50-year, 72-hour storm event for the three-inch lift. That's why we're procuring, we're looking to procure Tiger Dam to assist the users of the road to drive freely through there without the closure.
Okay, okay. And then you mentioned about the elevation, part of the elevation that's going to happen when it rebuilds. Is that going to affect other homes in the area or so?
It's not, it's not. We had staff looking at, that's why we have ponds too, so there are ponds designed as part of the roadway corridor, along the roadway corridor.
Okay. And let me see, in the moratorium, if it's, you know, approved for the fall, that would not, that means that there will be no development until 2029, until everything is finished?
Until one of the two, until our stormwater, our drainage manual is completed, or the road is completed.
Do we have already any development in the pipelines for that area?
There was two that went before the board. The first development was, I think, Windermere Town Homes, that's already through the process, so the moratorium wouldn't apply. And the other one is associated with the Disney's Cass housing area, and that would not apply.
But, you know, any for that time?
There's no other development. I think I mentioned there were nine undeveloped parcels in the area, and as such, it would have to go to the board for review and assessment for entitlements. So you guys all get a second pass or a first pass at approving or denying those parcels.
Okay. Okay, so, let's see. Okay, so I got it. I got my question. So thank you, thank you so much.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yeah, so I was, you know, thinking I was going to go last, and I just want to make sure, I start out by thanking you and your team and everybody. This took, I know this was a heavy lift, it was a lot of history and study in both the legal realm, in the engineering realm, and the environmental realm, but I think there are some points I just want to make sure that I'm articulating to our board that are hard to capture in a technical report. One of them is that when the road was closed for those 20 days, that even though it was nine miles, which sounds like nothing, it was a solid hour drive. And so that is, you know, it was a huge burden for people, both trying to get to work, because that is an access to major employment. Sadly, I think a lot of you have actually even met a friend of mine who had a business there right at that, where one of those numbers was, had to close his business in December and has since moved out of the state. And so the impacts are farther reaching than even what we're able to kind of encapsulate in this, and this was so, it was so detailed. But just know that my passion for this isn't just about the environment, it's really about the suffering that's happening, because we allowed people to develop in areas that should have probably never been developed in, right? So yes, figuring out how to get the ponds right, so important, but even more important, figuring out how to stay off the wetlands, right? Because they do a great job and have done a great job, and that was, it's so interesting that the history was, they just allowed the wetlands to spill into the road during flood seasons. The road was literally intended to be part of the movement of water from north to south in that area, but, you know, obviously that wasn't part of, you know, before we got here, before you got here, that wasn't part of the detailed look at a plan before giving the right to build homes there. But there are homes there, and this board, this board, approved some not even two months ago. And so, and we're talking about hundreds of more units within these last several months. And so my, I will continue to say that whatever we can do with a, you know, good legal rationale, knowing that there is an endpoint, right, whether it is adjusting our stormwater manual, whether it is getting to the road improvements in time, that there's going to be a definitive end. So if the board please, you know, if the board wants to move in that direction, I would still really encourage a tapping of the brakes, a slowing down, even though I know Commissioner Cordero asked if there was stuff in the pipeline, you know, like every other Tuesday.
Yeah, but beside the one that we already discussed, I meant.
Yeah, there's two, and so those properties right now have big, huge for-sale signs in front of them.
But I meant the new ones, and she already said that, there's none.
Yeah, no, but what I'm saying is that can happen within, you know, it's, it is extremely valuable property even though it is wet. So I think that just trying to make sure we're doing everything we can in a protective stance for the future there. I think that also looking forward Division 2050, and this is something that I brought up with Olin and Alberto, that knowing what we know now, because we invested in a great wetland mapping, we have this incredible tool, that we should apply it in as many ways as possible in order to avoid ever being back here. And so I know that we have areas that we're looking at for special protection, but it hasn't changed the underlying updates to our zoning and future land use. And why not? We now know, there's no, there's no reason to act surprised in the future. And I love that we had all this sort of articulated history, but none of it was a surprise. None of it was a surprise. We knew that was wet, you look at the aerials from 50 years ago, and it was a river. And someone thought, well, it's okay, I'll just pile some dirt up there out of a borrow pit from over here and make a neighborhood, we'll work around that. And that was, it's a failed plan, and it's happened all over the region, and that's what we're paying for now. So I do think that, and I'm so optimistic about the updates to our stormwater, I think we have the team right now to really be able to figure out what we need to do to make sure development interests, developments that come in, do what they need to do to continue to keep people safe. And that those people there, the new people, don't impact our existing residents, right, and take away from their quality of life. So, so yes to Strategies 1 and 2, yes, 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 you know, thank you, thank you, thank you. And then, you know, for me, and you all know that this was my approach in the beginning, but it's, you know, we have, we're a board, so we try to make sure that we're capturing the interests of the entire county. I would be more inclined to go with the Option 2 on the moratorium, so that we can really be able to tangibly have an endpoint to getting things done, to make sure that when development ensues, that it is safe. Now, I also want to point out that within the presentation, there was mention to the other stops in development progress that were done as part of the update to Vision 2050. None of those applied to this area because Vision 2050 and Orange Code, that those stops did not apply to Horizon West. So you all have seen some afternoons, all we have are things coming through in that area. So just, I wanted to kind of give that caveat, and I know that it doesn't, that it's an optics thing to some extent, to make sure that we are being consistent, but I wanted to point that out. Thank you.
All right. I don't think you mentioned Strategy 3.
Oh, so, so I am in favor of all strategies, because I think the only one that worried me, but Commissioner Cordero asked the question, and it was answered, was if we raise even the road that's there now in the interim, would it affect property owners? Would we then be, you know, putting dams in front of property? And I think that was addressed.
The road is designed to meet the 100-year, 72-hour storm, so if it goes beyond that, there's no guarantee that it will protect it, along with all the regions throughout Florida, right? So.
Yeah.
And so just, I'm just trying to understand, make sure I know where you are. You're good with one, Strategies 1 through 3.
Everything.
With Strategy 4, you are, you're supportive of, you said 2, the second portion.
I did, and I think, you know, I understand that they're calling one of those a partial and one a full, but it's still, if you think about it, it's a very distinct, to say full makes it sound very consequential, and in my, in my approach, I believe that because it's a very distinct geographical area with a very distinct finish line, that it isn't as risky as, you know, a full moratorium might be in some other situations. This is a very distinct area, there have been severe consequences to, you know, not having the infrastructure caught up.
So you're saying Strategy 4, partial?
No, I'm saying Strategy 4, Option 2, which is the no development.
Which is full?
Full.
Okay, okay. All right. Commissioner Scott presses button, and after you started speaking, and so has Commissioner Martinez-Simra. Commissioner Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you kind of summarize, like, what methods did you guys determine what areas are more prone than not? I mean, I understand you guys have a lot of historical data, but like, since this conversation happened several months ago, was there any new data you captured, any other methods you used to evaluate whether an area was prone to flooding or not?
So with FEMA, they've identified boundaries within the floodplain. So for the 100-year storm, if you go to their website, they'll have the boundary of the floodplain, and those are flood-prone areas. So those are the methods that our stormwater team looks at, but then there's also historical floodings that they have data to support. So I don't know if you need a specific area, so I can probably call someone from Stormwater to.
That's the Hazis software, I think, that they use, that FEMA uses?
So on FEMA's website, like, I would go to Google, and I would type floodplain boundary, and it'll pop you to a link, you click on the link, you put in your home address, your business address, or whatever address, and they'll pinpoint you to that location. From there, it will let you know if you're in the floodplain boundary or not.
No, I follow that. So I followed the FEMA flood-prone website, I get you there, and I get that we looked at, you know, obviously the concerns that Commissioner has experienced personally and some of her constituents. I get those two things. What I'm asking is, since the conversation, did any county staff members or any of our contractors do any additional evaluation in the development of this presentation since this conversation started?
I will have to defer to Stormwater.
Good morning, Danielle with Danielle Negrin, Chief Engineer. So to answer the question, in addition to what FEMA, the FEMA maps, which are the 2009 and not 2021, the current maps, we also, as was mentioned in the presentation, we have the master plan updates with this area falls within Reedy Creek and parts of Cypress Creek. Those are finishing up, I think she mentioned on 2025, later this year we'll have the final information for those two general basins. And we did reach out to our consultant who's working on the updates to rerun the data with all development that has taken place since, so 2024. So essentially, we capture as much information as we can that we currently have to have a model, so we can determine what areas are flood-prone based on the information that we have.
So that's still in the process, Brian?
It's not final, I mean, we have the working model, so it's been currently, we are peer reviewing the information from, so we have two consultants looking at the model, but we, our staff, Stormwater, we have reviewed the model, and now it's being peer reviewed.
So you guys are peer reviewing the model, and so you use that data as a reference point, but it's not necessarily captured for you to share in this presentation for the decision we're going to make today?
Yes, I guess it could, we, as part of the data used in the analysis, it's not the only source of data that we're using.
Okay. And do we have an inventory of, like, the number of county-maintained and private retention ponds in that area?
Yes, yes, that's part of our GIS system.
So we have the inventory, and do we know the capacities?
By capacity, I mean, are they working?
Like, like, capacity functionality, like, think Orlovista, we know what happened there, the capacity of the pond, the pumps, do we kind of know the state?
Yes, so essentially.
Like a state of the ponds, if that makes sense.
The ones that are maintained by Stormwater, we go every month, four to six weeks, and we make sure that they're working, they're mowed, and they're maintained. And so as part of the master plan update, we have what we call a level of service, that's a particular phase of the update, and we look as to, are those ponds, which are 25-year storm events, are they actually working as designed? So that's part of the master plan update. And those turn out to be, there were no ponds that were identified as being lacking in level of service at this time.
So with the flooding, there is not one pond county-maintained or privately maintained that was lacking in capacity, had any issues or overflowed?
Correct. No ponds and no houses were flooded, it's mainly the roadway.
Okay. And then, Andrew, you said the, you said a moratorium won't abate the flooding issue? Is that, was there, I don't want to put words in your mouth, is that what you said?
No, I was saying that we have to make sure that we have data analysis that whatever we're adopting, we can actually, that the moratorium will give us time to actually abate the flooding. If the flooding is happening because of things we can't control, like outside sources, water coming from areas that we don't have jurisdiction over, because the land, because we're getting more rain than we used to, then the moratorium, if it's not going to work towards solving the issue, would not have a rational nexus, there wouldn't be a nexus to imposing the moratorium, so it wouldn't be appropriate. If we can identify that suspending these permits, suspending development, and taking this time will actually help solve the problem, then the moratorium would have a rational basis or nexus to it.
So implementing a moratorium would not have a rational, I'm assuming factual basis, because they're still developing data, and thus would make it potentially not as defensible in court?
Yeah, if we don't have the data to back it up, then we won't recommend it, because you need the data and the information to say that there's a reason we're adopting this moratorium, and the reason is by suspending these permits, by suspending development, by giving us time to do this study, we will slow or stop the flooding so that we can have a solution, there has to be that connection.
I'm not an attorney, but I'm saying if, so if opposing counsel for any given property owner were to say, you just did this because you thought it would mitigate the flooding, but you don't necessarily have any factual basis to support that argument, then we would put ourselves in a situation where we'd have to...
That's going to be their argument.
Okay. Mayor, I'm good with my questions, thank you.
Commissioner Simra.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that we have the greatest factual information pertaining to flooding and why we flood. It's because we've overdeveloped and we've infilled wetlands that shouldn't have been infilled. So I think that the data does exist, Commissioner Scott, when we talk about that, we're all experiencing 30% increases in property insurance. We've just been dropped for the second time with my own personal home. So I think we have all the data in the world to say that we know why we're flooding, we have, our storm management plans have underestimated the prowess of Mother Nature. That's why we're flooding. We don't have to pretend that we don't know why, we don't have to look for data, we can look at anybody's monthly bill and their insurance, we can look at all of the people that have been dropped across the state. that have been trapped across the state, we can take a drive down any one of our roads across our, into all of our districts. We flood because our stormwater management system is not accommodating what we are observing in terms of increased storms. So I had a question pertaining to the investment on the three-inch asphalt, because I, it seems like this area, I mean, dealing with modern day times, it needs a bridge. It, it's, is that ever coming, a bridge?
There is a bridge design as part of this Reams Road project, so yes. So that's where that three-inch lift will be, is where the bridge is proposed to be. But this is an interim fix for the two-lane road to raise it up above the 50-year, 72. When that project goes underway, there will be a bridge design that Commissioner Wilson knows of.
Great, so it's a bridge, it's a temporary fix right now that's attached to the taxpayers' wallets, where we're going to put in a temporary fix, that then we, you know, to get to where we really need to be, because we shouldn't have developed in this area, we have more taxpayer money that's coming. So it's so unfortunate that we have to do Band-Aids to get around this incredible flooding that we observe there and in other places. So I, I support all of the top three. And then I also, myself personally, I, I don't believe we should be impacting any further wetlands here in Orange County until we really get a, a manage on, on how we're not flooding our people out. So I support Option One of a moratorium with limited to wetland and flood, floodplain impacts, until we're able to determine what is the best safe way to prevent the homes who already exist there from flooding and future residents from flooding. And in terms of data being available, we can drown in data, we can flood ourselves in data. So I really hope that we look at doing something that is more aggressive than a temporary fix, that puts down tax, taxpayer money, which is a Band-Aid that later then doesn't actually abate the problem. Thank you.
There was a mention about a temporary, I think, fix, and it was, I think, indicated that adding 10 inches of would be an option, but not a very good option, because it was a $14 million cost for temporary. And so for, for me, I didn't quite follow the, why it would be temporary.
Because we would eventually have to rip it up to widen the two, existing two-lane to four-lane. So the temporary fix is just to go through the two-lane corridor only. So when we go back to the project for Reams Road, it's widening and making it a complete street, so we'll have to tear up the whole corridor, which is basically, we'll get, that $14 million is going to be a wash.
Okay. And you mentioned the 100-year flood plain. You know, to, to me, much of this is kind of an educated guess about what will happen going forward into the future, because there are issues, I think, globally with global warming and impacts there on the weather phenomena across the globe, and to some extent, the damage that has been done to the global environment has already been done, and, and we're living in an era where, in some regards, we can't stop the destruction and devastation of Mother Nature. So we're trying to manage it, but I think that the enormity of the problem is larger than perhaps we're willing to accept. And it sounds like to me, you know, at least with the board so far, the first three strategies are not really being debated at this point. Our focus is now on Strategy Four, and what is the tolerance of the board to either do Provision One on the status, Strategy Four, or do Provision Two, Option Two, under the fourth strategy, or to not do that at all, where there's no moratorium. I think that's kind of where I'm hearing the board is. And I don't have a good feel for, for that based upon the conversation at this point. But Commissioner Wilson has asked to speak again, and so Commissioner Wilson, I'm going to go back to you. You've been wrestling with this in, in the district, the board has been wrestling with these issues because of development, but I'm also hearing something from the county attorney's office saying that any action that we take relative to these strategies needs to be defensible. And while I certainly appreciate the comments by Commissioner Simran, I do think that we're in a tough position to make certain that whatever decision we make is defensible. And I don't, I haven't heard enough of the argument at this point to say whether what we're suggesting is, is defensible if we do a moratorium or not. So I want to hear more conversation about that, maybe from the subject matter experts, but Commissioner Wilson, you wanted to add something else?
Honestly, Mayor, it was on the exact same line, because I, I did some research also when trying to make sure that something that we were proposing wouldn't put us at risk, and, and it was very brief research. Obviously, this is not my subject area of expertise, and it, and I'm not a county attorney, but I want to make sure that I understand what you described, because I think when Commissioner Scott asked about the nexus, that you said, well, if there is, you know, if there potentially an act of nature is the cause, then we would be putting ourselves at risk, and that would be the argument. And I don't think it is the act of nature that would be the focus, I, I think it would be the conduct, the human conduct, right? So we had a certain amount of buffer to prevent human loss of property, loss of life, and we actively permitted, allowed someone to destroy that, potentially putting people in harm's way. Now, we're trying to do something to, to prevent that in the future, and we know that there's a timeline associated with that. So the question would be that, that nexus, right, we're putting, we're hitting the pause, we're hitting the timeline, can that be tied to the definitive end of, yes, we're trying to update the way that we treat stormwater, the way that we protect wetland, not necessarily how much rainfall? I think that's a, that's a given, right? We are in Florida, we're going to get the rainfall, so that, that, I just want to make sure I'm linking the nexus in the right place.
If, if you decided to adopt the two-year option, waiting for the stormwater management plan to come, to get developed, those studies to be finished, and, and put a pause with the rationale, that your, your basis to defend that would be, the rationale would be, we need to pause this so we have these studies and we can know whether this, these things that we're about to do or proposing to do can fix the problem. So I...
So you're, so it's a finish line issue? It's, that's what I'm hearing, right? Because, but if that is happening in conjunction with potentially these, these other strategies, that adds to the argument that there is a definitive timeline closer than further, right? That there's not a true taking, that this isn't truly a taking of, of a right?
In the end, it, you know, it would go to a, if we end up in court, it's going to go to a judge, and the judge is going to sit, look at it, and they look for a rational basis and nexus for the moratorium, and, and the reason that you're causing, making a pause, whether you have a basis for that, and whether it's, in, in this case, it would be public safety, right? Because you have people driving down a road, and it's a wet road.
They can't get out, they can't get out of their neighborhood.
Right, right, so it'd be a public safety issue, and that, that's what we would argue as, as the rational basis and the nexus. And then the duration would also have to be reasonable. I mean, you can't pause, pause it permanently, you know, the courts have not set a hard date. I always feel comfortable under two years, but, you know, the courts have said that it just needs to be rational in relation to what you're doing for the public safety. So that's what, you know, a judge would, would, there's risk in this, there's no hard line, you can do it for five years, we don't have any ruling like that, that we can, we can set our...
I, I was going to say, it's really hard to find anybody prevailing in these. Like, I know it seems like the boogeyman here, we're like, oh, they're going to come and get it. I can't, it's, it's hard to find a prevailing plaintiff on a Burt Harris when it's something like this, where there is a finish line. So I just, I, I kind of want to make sure that we're making decisions without feeling like we're doing it out of some, it's like saying we shouldn't put a sidewalk in because someone's going to sue us when there's a crack in a sidewalk. We still put the sidewalk in, we still make decisions based on safety and public welfare, and I just kind of want to make sure that my board understands that.
John Weiss wanted to chime in here. John, and as you chime in, I want to try to get some clarity between what's the difference between Strategy Four, Option One, and, and Strategy Four, Option Two?
Mayor, thank you. And I think Andrew and Susan certainly have hit on sort of the fundamental reason why we're having this conversation, is the public safety concerns for the residents that live in this corridor today. I think Susan did a fantastic job in the presentation, sort of describing and putting it, put it in context, why the roads flood. Well, the Reams Road has a history of flooding because it's in the floodplain, and we've had 200-year storms within the last few years. So public safety fundamentally, I think, is the reason why we're here. Staff is recommending Strategies One, Two, and Three. Staff is not recommending Strategy Four, because staff believes Strategies One, Two, and Three address that fundamental public safety concern of the road's flooding. Specifically, Strategy One talks about ensuring that the road, water flows under the road, not over the road, and that the wetlands in that area recover more quickly and reduces the staging. Strategy Two is ultimately that, that one section of road where we are proposing the three-inch, moving forward with the three-inch lift of asphalt, it's raising the road and reducing the risk of flooding. No guarantees, we get another 100-year storm or, or greater, that sections of Reams Road are susceptible to flooding again. Additionally, with the enhanced maintenance, the Tiger Dam, that actually worked in Hurricane Milton. The road was able to stay open where the road was not able to stay open within Hurricaneian. And then, as it relates to development, Strategy Three, while short of a moratorium, basically says, if there's an instance where development is, is coming in and moving forward, at the minimum, they're not going to, they're going to basically be required to hold their own water. I think Susan did a good job of explaining the throttling of the, the water that would be able to flow off of the property to basically mirror CFTOD standards. And again, as it relates to new development, I mean, any new development that comes in in the future, the roads are flooding today. And again, the staff believes the roads are flooding because the roads are in the floodplain. The project, the Reams Road project, Forget Road projects are four years away, staff's working on them, they're fully funded, they're in production, and they will address, at least within the 100-year, they're, they're going to raise the road above the 100-year floodplain elevation. So what we're really talking about is this three, four-year gap between today and, and the future. And so, you know, I think for the reasons that, that staff has, has listed, Options One, Strategies Four, which is the moratorium ordinance, we don't think solves the immediate public safety concerns, we think Strategies One, Two, and Three do that fairly effectively. And, and, you know, and ultimately Strategy Four, because of the sort of temporary nature, the limited applicability, and the legal risks, I think those are, those are the reasons that staff not, while we're presenting the option for board consideration, we were not leaning in on that option, certainly wanted to make sure the board was aware of that for consideration. So staff was not recommending Strategy Four. But Mayor, to your question about the difference between Option One and Option Two, both, both of those options ultimately would require an ordinance, so staff would have to draft amendments to current code and bring that back for a, a public hearing, an advertised public hearing. But Option One, if the board believes that, you know, the impacts of development to floodplains and, and wetlands, while we have regulations to address those, that there's, there's a desire to basically say, no wetland and no floodplain impact, you can move forward development, we're not taking away your path, we're just saying, don't do, don't, 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 you know, submit a development proposal that impacts a floodplain or impacts a wetland. That would require an ordinance, but that still gives a path forward, where Option Two would basically say, we're not interested in, in letting you develop regardless of whether it's completely upland and whether there's wetland or floodplain impact, so we're just preclude development permits more broadly. And so I think that's the difference between Option One and Option Two, both of which would require a moratorium, which staff is not supportive of.
Okay, I'm clear. Commissioner Scott?
With reference to the moratorium, when you say no development, we're talking about all development from commercial to single, single-family?
Yeah, that, the details of that would have to be worked through when we were developing the ordinance and having the public hearings, but do you, do you know the intent?
So, so the moratorium wouldn't go into effect if we move forward with option Four, it would just push you guys to develop a moratorium?
Right.
And then carve out different...
Right.
...exceptions. And so if I purchased my property four or five years ago, or whatever, whether it's commercial or, or residential for me, and I, I saved enough money to do something, and then I met with this moratorium for two years or one year, I think that, you know, as any property owner, when they buy something, they have plans, you know, sometimes they don't have the funding for those plans, and so I'm, I'm hesitant to do a moratorium, knowing that it takes a lot of work to acquire a property and then acquire, you know, a contractor and money, so I'm just trying to understand, like, is there a fifth option that maybe I'm, I'm not thinking of that would kind of address the moratorium? Like, I just, like, I, I think everyone is, is clear on One, Two, and Three, and it seems that the board has consensus for those options, but I think the, the struggle point is, is Four, and, and what to do within that Four, whether it's Option One or Two. I do understand, you know, we have enough data, but I've been in enough courtrooms to know that people are going to make an argument and, and have like some specific websites, some specific reference data, not just pictures or observations, and we have to... So you're saying, like, in One, Two, and Three, this addresses public safety to the degree where if we did more than that, that would, I guess, give fuel to the fire for an attorney to be able to say that you're, you're taking someone's property rights and...
The One, Two, and Three, we haven't identified any legal risks in implementing One, Two, and Three. The legal risks occur when we implement the moratorium. If we do a moratorium correctly, and we have sufficient support for it, and it's based a rational basis and a nexus, then it, it doesn't mean we won't necessarily get sued anyway, but we, we will have a defensible moratorium.
And the rational basis is the yet-to-be-developed master plan, 2050, the things that they're currently working on now?
Yeah, it would be, when we're developing the ordinance, we would get, we would work through that with, with all the information that we have, and, and bring you back an ordinance that would implement the moratorium.
Okay, I'm good. Thank you, Mayor.
You know, given the, the conversation you just had, certainly, I think we're in agreement on One through Three, but with the explanation that John Weiss gave regarding Four, and in particular, Option One, where, as he explained it, you're not outright saying no to the development, but what you are saying is that your plan has to have some consideration where it would not affect wetland or floodplain impacts. And if, and to me, if, I, I don't see Option Two, I can't, I can't support Four and Two, but perhaps I could support One, because it allows a path forward, okay? With some... one, because it allows a path forward, okay? With some reasonable ability for the applicant to develop, come forward with something that would not have an impact on the wetland or the floodplain. And how realistic is that, okay? To, to you experts, how realistic is it that an applicant could come forward with a, a project that wouldn't have impacts on the wetland or the floodplain?
Mayor, this, this is, if I may jump in just briefly, and then obviously Susan-
Okay, let's, let's turn this mic on.
Sorry, Miles.
Yeah, there we go.
Mayor, in terms of, I just wanna be clear what option two actually means. And so, when we talk about increasing the design standards for stormwater systems to basically require new development, should it come forward, to hold its own water, that standard would require basically an oversized, substantially larger retention pond. A developer that might be in the wings, waiting to see, you know, to possibly bring a request forward, is gonna look at the land that's consumed ultimately by that substantially larger retention pond. And they're probably gonna weigh whether or not they want to proceed under those more stringent requirements. And so, it's unlikely, it's certainly, I think in my opinion, that a developer would choose to move forward in the next few years with that requirement. But ultimately, that would be a private decision by a landowner, looking at the regulations that, in fact, the board has, you know, directed the county engineer to enforce as to this area. So, even though it's not a moratorium on paper, it certainly, you know, might be perceived by a developer as to be a disincentive to moving forward over the next few years, because once that standard is relaxed and we go back to, when the road is there and the, and that risk, and they kind of default back to our new stormwater regulations, it, it's, it's likely that those would be less strict than what's being proposed here. So, Susan, I don't know if you have anything to add, Elise, to that, but then also the mayor's, your original-
So, I flipped to the slide 58. It has the four, the 19 remaining parcels that is under, in question to be developed in this area. The purple shaded area is the wetland. So as you can see, almost every single parcel has wetland impacts. So, for example, on the trapezoidal one, there's not that much upland for them to build. So if they, if you were to avoid it altogether, and you have a building in place in addition to a pond to account for that, it might not be feasibly possible for them.
Okay. So there's no path forward. There will be no path, no realistic path forward.
Unless their EOR thinks creatively.
On the strategy four, whether it's one or two, there's no real path forward, is what you, what I'm hearing you say.
It will be very difficult. I can't say no, because there's all these innovative technologies out there that I may not be aware of, but as far as I'm aware of, it will be very difficult path forward for the developer.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Uribe, then Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Semerit.
Can we go back to that slide, the, the final slide?
The final.
Okay. I mean, I wish we had them both, like a side-by-side, because obviously, the colors on, on that, it's, it's, it's enormous, right? The, the purples that we're talking about. And we're looking at, when we look at number two, it doesn't seem like there's any real feasible, natural way to help these people right now. So I know that number two, you're saying is, it's a 14 million that will eventually, but it does provide relief, something at this point, when you look at the purple. Because I mean, that's, that's what's concerning to me. I do wanna go to legal, though, on this, because this issue is rising more and more across the county, okay? I know Commissioner Scott, his community, Orla Vista, Rio Pinar, I mean, this is something that is consistently happening. And I start worrying about the legalities of this for us as a county, right? Because obviously, there's future land use, there's entitlements, there's folks who have that right. And then, are we essentially setting a precedent here? Because this is something that we're dealing with. I, I don't think there's any of us, I mean, countywide, that doesn't have this issue happening now, where development's coming in, that it's, it's granted entitlements, even I believe in District Five, you know, where they've got older entitlements that aren't necessarily consistent with, with what we're doing now. And then we're looking at Vision 2050, which we're looking at additional severe density, right? I mean, isn't it putting us in a serious legal challenge if we don't have a way to provide the basic, I guess, competence and, and people having their property, and also people living in areas where they're being impacted by this? I mean, where, where is this legal manifestation headed to?
I, I'm not sure there's a, it's to be seen. I would say it's to be seen. But in any case of a moratorium, I think it is a dramatic resting of someone's property rights when you choose to do a moratorium. So you wanna make sure you have a, a really good basis behind that. But in some cases, an example being public safety, it is appropriate, and the courts have stood behind moratoriums as being appropriate, to suspend things for a moment so that our regulations can catch up. Whether our regulations right now related to flooding and wetlands and, and all the things that are involved in a situation like this are caught up, maybe not. And, and maybe they need to be caught up. But that depends, that's, that's at your discretion, whether one, two, and three solves the issue until the regulations get set up, or whether a moratorium is appropriate. In this case, is that your discretion?
Okay. So I know that number two has become an, an issue now, but it seems like this is actual assistance. It will be able to help now. I mean, this is what we would call-
The overlay.
The overlay, correct. And I know there's a, there's a cost to it, but isn't there a bigger personal rights cost if we don't provide some sort of relief right now? Because when you showed that map, I don't, I mean, I don't know how else we can actually, I mean, that's, that's just as blatant as it can be, unfortunately. So, I think that if we don't do number two, we're only setting up just a matter of when the failure will take place, depending on what the climate will bring, for this, for this community.
But these 19 parcels are zoned PD, so when it's zoned PD outside the moratorium, it can go back to the board for you to decide what you wanna do with those parcels for entitlements?
Susan, I'm sorry to jump in, Mayor. In terms of their current zoning, I don't know that we've looked at that, but I think most of those properties are not zoned today. They would have to go through a PD process to seek entitlements-
So they're not-
Which would ultimately come to the board. Nick, I don't know if you have any sense of those parcels, which again, are mostly, they're all in the rise and west area, and they all have substantial amount of wetlands on that, which would have to be addressed as part of any PD or-
We have a map. Hold on one second.
Apologies, Mayor.
All right. Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, I was gonna say, while she's looking for that, and I think, I just wanted to also clarify, I think, looking at the, it, it sounds to me like the board is really leaning towards the option that would just really impact those wetland and floodplains, which I, I completely agree and support, if that's the direction we're going in. But I wanna ask, because I think it's really important, it has really made a difference in several of the cases that have come before us recently, would that be with our updated wetland code mapping in the inventory we have, or are we using the old one? Because I know a lot of these entitlements and expectations are put in based on the mapping from 30 years ago. And I just wanna make sure we're using the most up-to-date data when we determine what that, you know, wetland floodplain actually looks like.
Mayor, I at least, I can attempt to address that while Susan's looking for some of the zoning records. So in terms of the wetland layer, I think there are some generalized data sets that staff uses to provide, so just kind of a, a bird's eye view of where the wetland's on the property. That's the basis for the map that you saw in the presentation. However, as part of any development review or proposal, there would be a conservation area determination, which would establish the wetland boundaries on the property. That's actually field verified by staff. And then you would also have an impact permit associated with that, which under the new codes, again, you know, I think staff attempted to describe how the new code does a better job about, about providing buffers and additional wetland storage, where the old code didn't really address that. As it, with respect to ultimately the floodplain, that's all a FEMA process. And so, which is, which is a federal review. So when a development would come in, if there's not a base flood elevation, that has to be established to figure out where, where the limits of the property are, that either fall above or below that 100-year flood elevation. And if there's any proposed development that would affect the flood, the established flood elevations, they would have to go through a letter of map revision, in coordination with a whole lot of, with technical review by staff, or stormwater modeling, and, and floodplain assessment, to ensure that the proposed development is outside of the 100-year floodplain. That's something that we specifically review as part of development proposal, more at the engineering and, you know, PSP-type stage than necessarily the entitlements. But those are the, several, Commissioner, several of those projects were approved with wetland impacts and/or floodplain impacts. But again, under some of the older regulations than what we have in place today. Susan, I don't know if you wanna add anything to that, or come back to the zoning?
We weren't able to find anything. But there's some areas that are zoned PD, but some are not. But then, if we look back in those slides, a lot of the parcels are that, should the developer come in and try to get development rights for the conservation easement, it would have to go to the board for approval. With regards to this one, again, the majority of the 19 parcels are impacted by the floodplain. I wasn't able to locate any zoning for these parcels.
Okay. So, I'm gonna move forward. Dr. Semerit?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm, I just, I just would like to, my other job, I'm a statistician. And right now, I look at this map, and we have this, an independent, we've got a dependent variable, right? Flooding, finding out the cause. And when we know that the cause is because we have filled in areas, like what we see here between the blue and the, the aqua and the purple, if we don't adopt the moratorium on option one, which is only about wetlands and floodplains, then we should continue to see the same result over and over and over again. So, it's two years to make the improvements, to figure out what's going on with the stormwater management. But we can't continue running like a statistical model using the same variables and expecting a different outcome. We, we must do something in option one, with a moratorium that's limited to wetland and floodplain impacts. Is it going to impact some property owners? Yes. But when we look at the vast amount of property owners, that it would impact to be flooded out and to lose your home, or to have your public safety jeopardized, imagine having your family's safety jeopardized, because we can't take, because we're concerned about some property owner, your mass population. It's so important. Option one still has a path forward. It's not a forever strategy. It's only two years. And again, if we're looking at that previous map, we know the cause of why it is flooding. So if we do not stop the infill on the wetlands, then we must continue to expect the same outcome. So I am very much in support of a moratorium on wetlands and floodplains for this development. Thank you.
Okay. So, here, here's where I think we are at this point. This, this item was not intended for an action today. However, it is intended to give staff direction. And so let me see if we can't give staff direction based upon what we have heard. So, it appears to me that the direction to staff is clear regarding strategies one, two, and three. Are we, do we have consensus on that?
Yes.
Okay. The second issue is staff direction regarding a moratorium. Let's, let's back up from the, the second option. I don't think we have consensus for option two. So the question now is amongst the seven of us, how many could support the option one? Okay? Where are you on that, Commissioner?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Moore, where are you on that? Okay. Commissioner Uribe?
Yes.
She, she said yes. Commissioner Gomez-Cudero?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Semerit?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So Commissioner Scott said-
I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. I thought we were strategy one.
No, we're talking about-
My apologies. My apologies.
Okay. I'm confused now. Okay. So what we were talking about was strategy four-
Wetland and floodplain.
Whether you were supportive of, of option one or two. But what, what I said was that it sounded to me like the majority clearly were not with option one. I mean, option two.
Option two.
Okay. So I'm trying to get the litmus test on option one, where the board is regarding option one. If we don't have the majority of the board supportive of option one, then we'll move forward with just the direction to regarding strategies one, two, and three. Okay? So Commissioner Wilson said-
Yes.
That she was supportive of option one on the floor.
Or some one.
Commissioner Moore said she was not. She just wants to stick with the one through three strategies. And so Commissioner Uribe, if that provides some clarity to you, what I'm asking at this point?
I, I, I feel comfortable with option one, but I would like to have more information that makes sense to you. So, I'm with, I'm with strategies one, two, and three solid, but on, on-
Okay. So, okay. So, so let me try to interpret that. You'd like more information, you're not, okay. So, that would be another category. Staff would move forward wholeheartedly with one through three, do further research into option one.
Option one.
Okay. And that, we'd have to make some decisions-
I wanna see exactly.
At a later date. Commissioner Gomez-Cudero?
So Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
I know, but I want them to tell me more. We still gonna go with one, two, three, right?
Yes.
With one, two, three. And then, in, in four, we gonna, I mean, option two is not, not already on the, on the floor?
Option two on four is not.
Okay. So my question is, when developers come and, and so, are they still, are we still looking into the wetland and all of that impacts?
Yes.
Okay. So then what we want moratorium for, if we still look into that?
No, they, they, they can still impact wetlands right now. They, they are able to, it happens, it happened with the last two on Reams Road that came to this board. Everyone zoomed right by my concerns about the wetland impacts when I brought them up at those hearings.
But usually it's-
And voted me down.
Depends on the level of the wetland as well, right? The class of level. I mean, whatever. Okay, anyways, more, more information would be good.
Okay. Commissioner Semerit?
Yes, I support option one, number four.
Commissioner Scott?
I support option one, number four, with the caveat of what I said earlier, is there option five? As I understand it, we're not voting on a moratorium. They, they're gonna come back with some additional information, which is what I wanna see. I guess, like, I get the larger scale impacts, right, for commercial? But if, like, just say I bought a lot, this would impact me. And so, I would just wanna see how that moratorium be crafted. So I'm not saying yes or no, but I wanna move forward.
But you would wanna know if that was lot was underwater also, wouldn't you? And that would give you a heads up.
Exactly. Yeah.
Okay. So, part of what staff said was that, in any of these scenarios, it would have to come back before the board either way because of zoning, for those, those few property owners that would be potentially impacted here.
Yes.
Okay. So, okay. So what we, what we end up with is, is this, I think, is in terms of direction to staff, staff is clearly supportive of options one through three. Need more information for, for-
For one.
For one. Okay. Okay. And at some point, based upon what you all tell us, of potential impacts or viability of projects with remaining land, et cetera, that's, where there are no impacts- of projects with remaining land, et cetera, that's where there are no impacts, we'll have to make a decision there. So you would have to, for the next, we're due to hear this coming back, when, when do we come back, John, do we have a date approximately?
It's not necessarily scheduled to come back, Mayor. I think it does depend on the direction today. Strategies one, two, and three don't require any specific action by the board. I think certainly the county engineers heard the direction regarding strategy three. Strategy one through two have already in production by staff. So it's just, it's strategy four, if you want a work session on a possible moratorium ordinance, that might be the next step. But in terms of, you know, or the board could just simply direct us to prepare the ordinance for a public hearing today, but there's not a specific engagement.
So whenever the county attorney stands up and he starts whispering, he has something that he wants to say.
I want to get back to storm season.
What was it Jeff, that you wanted to add?
It was just simply dates. If there was a date that the board wanted to bring this back for some discussion, and obviously I'd look to the county attorney's office if we were directed to prepare an ordinance of how long that would take. But if the board desires of another work session, we can look at, you know, probably sometime in March or April to bring that back.
I'm not sure what you're saying, Commissioner Wilson.
Mayor, there is, this team has done an ordinate amount of work, and I understand that potentially some of our commissioners needed to wrestle with some of these things that had a little more detail. But I'm asking right now that if we are considering option one for the wetland and floodplain only moratorium, that we go ahead and direct staff to come back, because we've gotten the information that we needed from engineering. We understand our challenges in this area. It is a floodplain. So at this point, in order for me to be able to go back to the community and say, no, we're not just sitting on our hands until hurricane season rolls around again, I am begging that we move forward and allow them to work on the language for, for sub one.
There was no consensus to do that, Commissioner Wilson. That doesn't mean it's a no.
So then you are no.
It doesn't, it doesn't mean...
Because we had, I mean, there was, there was...
No, we had...
But we're gonna have, we're gonna have now, so this will be now the third work session on something before we even get to language that may be protective of people out there.
I can't stop that, but in terms of the action today, there was, there was no majority to say move forward with one. Okay. So we still have to have the, that's what we heard. There were some who were direct, no, we don't need to do a moratorium. There were others who said, I need more information. So in deference to the board, that's where we are. There were, okay, all right. So the direction to staff is to look at option one and see, craft something that may be acceptable to the majority of the board or not, you know?
What's that mean? You're asking for what? The information we got today was for that decision. So are you asking them to do the exact same, but just about flood? I mean, we got the floodplain information. We have the wetland mapping. We understand how many parcels are now potentially gonna move people into floodplains where we will then have to send our Orange County Fire and Rescue to pick them up out of their windows like they did in your district and your district.
Okay.
But you want to go ahead and kick it down the line.
Commissioner Wilson.
So Commissioner Wilson, I can't speak for any other commissioner, but I think I want to articulate my points. I think you understand it. Well, I don't live in the area. I've had the opportunity to go out there a couple of times to see some things, most recently as of yesterday. What I'm asking for is, this was kind of a summary of what has been done and what they're doing. It wasn't a, like, a final, they're still working on a matched plan. They're still piecing things together. Even said they're in the process of peer review. What are the results of that peer review?
That is just for one aspect. That is for the stormwater management plan. That was happening no matter what.
No, I get you.
So they don't know what to come back and show you at this point, is what I'm saying. Because they showed you all the reasons why a potential moratorium and these strategies would be our options.
So let me ask them. I won't put words in their mouth. You all clear what we're asking you? If not, then we need to clarify.
I agree with Wilson. We are not sure what you want for us to bring to you during the next work session specifically.
They give you that information. I don't know what they're looking for.
Okay. Commissioner Uribe, did you have something?
Yes, I actually want a little bit more clarity on the PDs and what John had already mentioned, because I'm also struggling with if it's gonna come in front of us. So we're gonna be able to determine and vote on that anyways. I also wanted to see, I know he said some of them are undeveloped, you said some are, they're in the Horizon West. I really want to sit with legal too and really look at that, at what it's going to actually entail of us doing this, because there, us, us making that decision today, there is an outcome of this, one way or the other. And I know that on the, on the environmental side, Commissioner Wilson is very right, you know, we're gonna stop it right now.
People are moving into floodplains.
But I am concerned about the PDs. I'm concerned about the village that it's already been entitled. And that's where I want some more clarity, because there are some that you have said, some are un, there's no requests, but there's some that have. And so before we make that decision and actually implicate ourselves here on this board by supporting that, I want to entail fully what that will mean. So does that give you clarity on what I'm requesting?
It does, but that's provided up there on the screen, because what's left in this area are 19 remaining parcels. Of the 19, there's 18 undeveloped parcels that would have to go back to the board for entitlements. So you guys get a second pass.
So they do get to come in front of us, but the parcel that is...
We do not get updated conservation area determinations when those come in for entitlements. It's been my argument since day one, that we don't know, we have not mapped it till we know what we're looking at. And that's why by the time it gets to a PSP, we have chipped away at that wetland. And that's why we continue to see areas that are very recently developed where people are knee-deep in water every single storm season.
I thought you guys bring CAIs to us, or certain CAIs.
Not before they get entitlements.
Not before they get entitlements.
Okay. And then is there a breakdown of these 19 parcels?
We can provide that for you.
So you did...
We, no, we have it in my office. But those are the outlines of the parcels. The breakdown, how many, meaning how many acres?
No, just like the type of parcels, like when I talk about residential, commercial, like it says 19 parcels, 18 undeveloped, but like I don't know what those parcels are. Can you send them to me?
They're...
You said 19 parcels, like how are they, how are they, you say they're not zoned for anything, how are they zoned? Like...
John, do you know the answer?
The zoning and all that.
I'm sorry, ask the question again.
They're all A1 because they're with the village, it's Horizon West Village, which means they're...
They would need to come, the properties that currently are, as the commissioner's noting, that may be A1 zoning, because it's in Horizon West. There's an underlying village plan, a specific area plan for that, and they would have to come in with a PD rezoning to request the entitlements. As part of that PD rezoning, a conservation area determination is required to establish the upland developable acreage, which establishes ultimately the entitlements that would be able to be requested as part of that PD rezoning. And should they choose or request an impact permit, that would be evaluated as part of a PD rezoning application as well, to the extent they needed those or wanted those impacts to secure any entitlements.
I want you all to reflect on some of these that have come through and how many that we've actually been able to protect people from those flood impacts and from the wetland impacts at this level when it comes through as part of that process.
Is there option to revise how the CAIs make their way to us?
Commissioner, earlier in the presentation, we talked about the new wetland code and where the new wetland code does, does a better job of providing enhanced buffers and additional storage and the way that it treats the wetlands and their benefit to water storage as it relates to floods. So the, we, in the last two years, I believe, we brought forward a series of studies, a major update and overhaul to our wetland and conservation codes, and the board adopted those more stringent protections that are now in effect.
So can I ask one more question to John? Okay, so Commissioner Wilson here is saying that we're still giving away these entitlements, these people are flooded, right? But you're telling us when a developer comes in front of us, and this is what we do vote on, so I will agree on that, says these are, these are, this is the amount of upland developable land that we can, that they can do. I mean, we just had a case recently, you know, so where, where's this disconnect? Because what makes me uncomfortable with the option one is what you're saying, what she's saying, and then what's actually happening in the real world don't all seem to be flowing together.
The commissioner made reference to a few recent projects. One of those that I think the board is very familiar with, Windermere Springs PSP, that originally the board denied, and then we got challenged on that, and then ultimately was brought back for reconsideration. There were no wetland impacts, and there were no floodplain impacts associated with that.
Under the old maps, John, and I will say this without a hundred, without the buffer.
There are no other maps, Commissioner.
No, no, what I'm saying is the way that it was mapped, there was no, there was no buffer to the closest wetland within that plan. So to understand it, I have not been able, there's not, like, you can't do the, and I understand that they were in the pipeline, so we couldn't deny it at that point based on that. So what I tried to do was deny it based on the fact that I believe that there was a health and safety risk to adding more density to that area. Clearly did not prevail in either one of those cases, right? So that's another 300, 400 families that we've added here in the last few months to this mix. I just want you to understand that. So, so when I, like, the, the mapping that I'm addressing, I believe, in the, in the code, the ability for us to include some buffer to any wetland was not contemplated in anything in that review for Windermere Springs. Correct?
Commissioner, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time following.
Okay. I think what, so what, what we're trying to figure out is based on, we've updated some of these things that we're hoping get to the problem, right? We've updated the wetland code, we're looking at continuing to update the way we treat stormwater. In the meantime, we have cases that are moving through. There is some feeling here that those can move through without any additional steps in taking a moratorium. And we would have the ability and scrutiny to identify those and then do that type of a scrutiny here at the board level. And what I'm trying to say is that has not happened thus far, in my experience.
So Commissioner, there were two recent applications, both along Reims Road. One of those being a subdivision plan, which ultimately met all the county's land development codes and regulations. The other one was a rezoning request. And to the, to the extent that these properties that you see on the screen do not have entitlements, then they would go through a, the one, they're required to be a PD, which comes before the Board of County Commissioners. They would go through a full staff review. And we would have at that point, at that public hearing, a very clear delineation of any potential wetland impacts that may be requested as part of that application. And the board can weigh that in its consideration of those requests for entitlements.
So by the time you all get that, is there a staff recommendation?
There would be, yes.
And is that staff recommendation, generally speaking, based on a level of consideration for the things we're talking about here today that are very specific to one area? Are those, generally speaking, recommendations based on what we have countywide, that are applied countywide, like, in every single case?
Well, staff completes its analysis and review based upon the adopted policies of the Board of County Commissioners and regulations. Certainly, we heard today that the direction to the county engineer to require more stringent stormwater regulations be applicable to new development applications, that condition, that assessment would be part of staff's review in any, in any development proposal that gets brought forward.
And I'm only saying that because I want to make sure that you understand, we don't really have the luxury that we got here today to be able to take a look at an area where we know, we've had several of these cases come through, they zoomed through in the afternoon, to actually look at what the impacts are of these cases when they're stacked up together. Because nothing that, when, when staff does their reports and they do a great job of putting together those reports, it doesn't have any exponential impacts of what's happening around that area. But this gives us the opportunity to look at that and get this right. I just...
So Commissioner Wilson, you're not wrong, you know, in what you're saying, that's, that's not the issue. Just, just to recap, what, what we tried to do was to see if there was consensus to move forward with strategies one through three and four one, okay? Yourself and Commissioner Semirat were the only two that specifically said yes to that, okay? So the others who articulated that position, Commissioner Moore said she was a no. Commissioner Uribe was, I need more information. Commissioner Gomez-Cudero said, I need more information. Commissioner Scott said he needed more information. Okay, at that point, I didn't announce my decision, even though I had said already that I might be interested in one through three and four one. So there was no consensus to do the outright moratorium, okay? And that's, that's where we ended up. While commissioners did not take us, we didn't call for a specific vote, I was trying to see where the consensus was to give staff direction. There was no consensus to give staff direction to say, come back with one through three and four one. I'm gonna call it a partial moratorium, if I can use that terminology here. There was no consensus to give staff that direction. And there still isn't any consensus to give staff that direction. You know, we could have interpreted that as one through three is the only, this is where staff is, I mean, the board is, one through three. So I don't know how to get around it at this point, that's the way it works. This was not intended for a vote today, but to give staff direction. And staff, I think we're clear on one through three. We're still kind of in no man's land with the, with the four one option.
That's not a question, that's a...
Okay, and that's a no, okay? That's, that's effectively what that ends up is, is no support there if staff is saying, well, they're not sure what, what else they could do to give clarity, give additional information to the board. But I'm saying at this point, I don't think that we necessarily have to just make that final decision today. After the conversation, I think we should schedule a workshop to come back and, and try to get it, get that answered, okay? Otherwise, to do otherwise, we're, we're in conflict with the dialogue today. Now, if the board says to our colleagues up here, if you have heard the response from staff, Ms. Usack gave a response, if you all think that we should stop now, the majority, then that's where we'll be. That would be the direction that staff will have, is to come back with one through three.
Is, is there assurance that that step will take place, John, on option two?
It would be option one.
Option one, option one.
Four one.
Option two, no. Option one, section four. Because I think that's, I think we want to make sure that people are gonna be in the best possible situation, this isn't continued to happen. And that's where I have resistance. The reason why, and just for point of clarity to staff, the reason why I wanted additional information on that option one was because I want to make sure there's a check here. We definitely don't want people moving in and already flooding that are gonna be moving in. And I essentially think where Commissioner Wilson is, if she's, if she's telling us here that we can't even guarantee that as we're giving entitlements right now to properties, to, to projects that are coming forward, how responsible are we as a government in that moving forward? But Commissioner Wilson, I don't feel comfortable saying, here's a moratorium, this is what it's gonna be.
It's not forever.
But, but can staff guarantee us that we're gonna accomplish that without a saying moratorium? That's all I'm asking.
Well, that's a, staff can't guarantee the action that the board may take, you know?
But I mean, we're not getting that information. I mean, Commissioner Wilson is sitting here saying that we're approving these that, that are, that are having flooding. So how do we prevent that from happening? What is, what is happening from here to here?
So Commissioner, with respect to the PD applications, of which, again, we're in Horizon West, a new development application for these parcels, to the extent that they're not already PD, would be required to come to the Board of County Commissioners for consideration. As part of that staff review and analysis, we receive information, we require information about the delineation of not just floodplains, but also the extent of wetland limits. And so that information will be brought forward as part of any PD application, including staff's analysis and ultimately staff's recommendation, including the conditions or the more stringent review related to stormwater. the more stringent review related to stormwater, consistent with the direction that we've received from the board today. Some wetland impact permits are required to come to the Board of County Commissioners, others are not. And again, the board spent an awful lot of time over the last few years to adopt more stringent and environmentally responsible wetland regulations. So again, under that code, if there was a conservation area impact permit, we would review it in a manner consistent with the board's adopted code. In terms of floodplain impacts, again, should a project have entitlements or be seeking entitlements, in, in a similar vein, staff would review an associated floodplain impact in a manner consistent with the board's adopted codes and regulations.
Okay. So I asked the board one final time this morning, with the explanation John has given you, how many of you are willing to proceed with that explanation with one through three?
Mayor, can I?
Yes.
Yes.
Can I just say something really quickly? I, I think what I'm hearing from, from my colleagues is that they, in, in order to process some of these things, the way they come in front of us in our land use cases, they are really very much clumped together, staff report, like I said, not necessarily delineating areas of concern, which this is, and I'm not asking for some new study on this. What maybe needs to happen, and I don't know if this is a completely different instruction for our legal team and for potential future, you know, adoption, but would be to highlight areas that have had historic flooding for a separate type of evaluation when they come through as a CAI as part of a PD. Because I, I believe that nobody here intentionally let these things zoom by, but I have raised the flag again and again on sometimes very complex development cases that have potentially hundreds, if, you know, if not over 900, I think is my largest that I've done, where I said, this is definitely gonna be impacting floodplains and, and wetlands. And there was a motion, I couldn't get a second on my denial because I was concerned about it and wanted to get more information. So I've not been able to stop it here during those cases. I've not been able to say, listen, I'm really worried about the actual CAI that was outdated that had, I've not been able to get to those at that stage, because we're trying to get through the afternoon, we've all been here for a million hours, and that's not your fault. So maybe there is another way to approach this in our analysis of those land use cases where you can be told, here are some historic, come with this particular CAI or in this floodplain before you determine its entitlements. Because that's what I'm hearing. Is that correct?
Yeah. That, that's very accurate. We want the same thing.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so.
Mayor, I have a new commissioner question.
Yes.
I'm sorry. I'm listening to, to John and everything what you're saying, but I, I'm not understanding if the system and the process is working along the way, then how, how did, why are we here?
It isn't.
Commissioner, I think the presentation was clear, we're here at least in part because the road, it was constructed in the floodplain.
No, we put people in a, by a road. We put people in neighborhoods, in a floodplain, by a road, in a floodplain. So one of those things came first, but we approved this, and I mean us historically, right? Not us.
Right. That has already happened. So, okay, so let me go back to, let me just go back, okay? I'm gonna ask the staff, given what you've said, the questions about what it means to go forward without, for any type of moratorium. Commissioners, you've heard the dialogue. Commissioner Wilson, where are you?
Where am I about what? I mean, I've been super clear about what.
Mayor, if I may, if, if there's a desire by this board to ensure that staff's analysis of whether it's a conservation area impact permit that may come before the board in this area, or alternatively, as part of a staff report for a PD or PSP rezoning, that would, or PSP rezoning, sorry, PD rezoning or a PSP in this area, we can absolutely make sure that staff report addresses floodplain, potential floodplains, stormwater, and any, you know, environmental type issues. And certainly with Nick, you know, who, who works with the DRC office, drafts, you know, discusses that and ultimately drafts that staff report, that we can make sure that there's a robust review on those projects that come forward within this area.
Okay, so by the time it gets to PSP, they have their entitlements and they have their best possible legal case for taking, right? So if we're going to make any adjustments or hold anything, it has to be before they get those entitlements, every step that they go through here, PSP's last, they have the best chance for, for challenging us legally. So just keep that in mind as we discuss this, okay? And potentially, in many areas where I am, there are still pre-grubbing, pre-grading that happens before we get to a PSP, which I know wasn't supposed to happen. And I don't know what the enforcement arm is on that. So this, you know, if you hear desperation in my voice, it's because I feel very desperate. And I feel very much like we cannot continue to operate with, look, even, even if you think about that very narrow, right? This is a narrow geographic area that this moratorium would take place in. It's a narrow timeframe that it would take place in, and it's a narrow topic. It's flood, it's, it's until '26 until they come up with, or whenever they get the road finished. But the idea is that we are looking at something that has an end, has an end point, has potential solutions. But if the argument is we can do this through our regular process, I think that Commissioner Semirad's point is, is spot on, we wouldn't be here if that process was, was, was working. And I want to make sure that we're getting to it.
I'm just trying to land the plane on this issue, okay? I'll go back to the members of the board.
Mayor, may I ask a question, though?
Yes.
Because, John, if, if by the time it's at the PSP, the entitlements are already granted, what is the point then at that point if we're not going to be able to do anything here?
Go fire.
I mean, I'm, that's, I mean, to me, with, with all honesty, Commissioner Wilson, what, what concerns me is Vision 2050, because then it's even worse than everywhere else. So that's where, so if the entitlements have already been granted, what is the point then for us to have that data when we can't then take away that entitlement at that point?
So Commissioner, in terms of, again, the, the limited subset of parcels within this area, while in Horizon West, which effectively provides for a future land use designation, you know, for the, for the future of that property, most of those properties likely do not have their PD rezoning. They don't have the entitlements conveyed today. So that ultimately would be something that would come before the Board of County Commissioners for consideration. You are correct, at, at the subdivision plan or infrastructure plan stage, it is much more difficult at that point. I mean, obviously, with the subdivision plans, you know, we would be doing a review to ensure the stormwater ponds are, you know, have the potential to be sized appropriately, you know, for the stricter standards in the interim. But at least as to your, your comment about the PSPs, yes, you know, more denying a code compliant subdivision plan is much more difficult to defend than, than at the entitlement stage.
Listen, I didn't want to do this, and I think there's some misperceptions about this action.
We, we see that's clear.
And then listen, remember, if you remember when I first brought it up and, and we were able to ask for this incredible presentation that was put together today, I showed you what the residents there have gotten, which is two separate pieces of mailers from Orange County that promised them solutions that have already passed, right? So the deadline for the last one would have been, they would have started construction, I think in '24, finishing in '26, that's gone. We're now, so you're seeing the continued loss of, of, you know, our ability to even, I don't know how to even convey this conversation today to the people out there who are really hoping that there's gonna be a decision made here. So I just, I just want to make sure that we're being clear, there, it's, it's difficult to grasp sort of this narrow application, knowing, I think, our frustrations across the county with this topic. But please keep an eye on the fact that this is really affecting day to day, a very small area of the county, and I believe that a decision today to, to go ahead and come up with that language would be a benefit.
All right, you played your case, all right. I'm gonna go back to the central question. We've had another 30 minutes or so of conversation since I asked you the first time. Commissioner Wilson, I take it your position is you would like to see one through three with four, one as the option. Commissioner Moore.
I'm still a no, because I think staff came up with a lot of solutions. We saw some movement from John on the CA process as well, and I think the legal exposure is too great considering that our staff came up with a lot of good solutions, so I'm still a no.
All right, Commissioner Uribe.
Do we know what that deadline date would be on option one?
It had to be launched, so we still come back.
I mean, do we, do we have an idea of when that, that study is supposed to be completed or when that work is supposed to be done? Because I mean, we're saying it's a temporary. Option one would be temporary, so we have.
It would be either when the drainage manual is completed or when the roadway is completed, the, the first of the two. So it'll be the end of 20, it was estimated that the drainage manual would be completed at the end of 2026, or the roads be completed at mid-2029, so that's the deadline for those.
Okay.
That's, I, I'm with one through three, but not, I can't do the four.
All right, one, two, three. All right, Commissioner Gomez-Cudaro.
I think she proved her point, so one, two, three, and number one. And I'm just thinking about when there are two more commissioners, when there were eight, I think we will be here forever.
All right, Commissioner Semirad.
I am one, two, three, four, one.
Okay. So one, two, three. Commissioner Scott.
I'll go with option.
And then hear you.
Oh, sorry, one direction.
I'll go with options one, two, and three, and then option four, option, or number four, option one.
Okay. All right, so I'm gonna go with four, one. Okay, all right, so that's the direction we're gonna give staff review, four, one. All right, thank you all, and we will go into recess until 2:00 PM. All right, thank you all, and we will go into recess until 2:00 P.M.